Ready? Good morning, everyone, and welcome to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing this December 19th of 2023. I'm pleased that Reverend Joe Evans is with us today from First Presbyterian Church of Marietta. He will be providing our invocation, followed by the pledge which I will lead. For those of you willing and able, please stand for our invocation and pledge.
Almighty God, we bow our heads before you, giving you thanks, knowing that there may be much for us to do, and our agenda for this meeting, for this day, and for this season may be long in our estimation. Yet the work we have before us is nothing compared to the work you have done already on our behalf. While we were sleeping, you kept the planet spinning. While our eyes were closed, the stars shone brightly, and you restored our strength. Before our days began, you were at work already. When our days are past, your work will continue. Enable us then not to be overwhelmed with the task before us, but to begin our labor with gratitude, knowing that the way may be long, yet the destination is sure. For you, oh God, are our rock, our creator, our redeemer, our sustainer. And we pray that you will grant those who serve on the Cobb County Commission your strength, and that you will give those who seek to be heard by them your patience. As the commissioners labor before you, remind them of your work, which is even now making all things new. As the citizens speak and as the commissioners listen, remind them all that your ear is always tuned to hear the cries of the suffering, and that your arm is always on the side of the widow, the orphan, and the oppressed. Moving towards a better future, should we hit a wall this morning, a fork in the road, or hear voices who say, "We've never done it that way before"? Remind us that even you know what it is to be reviled, that even you know what it is to offer your heart and your soul to a people and to feel their rejection and their spite. Take away our frustration with each other, then. Grant the women of this county commission your strength. Grant us all your endurance. Grant us all unity. Grant us this day a strong sense of purpose, that we all might join you in that great work of making all things new. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Reverend, thank you for that powerful invocation. Appreciate you being here today. That was wonderful. Thank you. With that, we'll go ahead and call our meeting to order, and I will turn things over to our zoning manager, John Peterson, to walk us through today's agenda.
And thank you, Madam Chair and Board. Today's hearing will be conducted with the following process and procedure. Each case will be called in a miracle order. When the case is called, we would ask that the applicant please stand and raise their hand to show that they are in attendance. After calling the applicant, we will also call for any opposition to that specific case. We would also ask that the opposition please stand and raise their hand so that they can be counted for the record. After recognizing both parties, both parties will be asked to come forward, to be sworn in. The applicant will testify first, and then the opposition, if any, will testify second. It's important to note that each side only gets 10 minutes to state their case of concerns. There's not a rebuttal process, and there's not a process to reserve your time, so you need to convey all your information to the board within your 10-minute time period. In addition, if there's more than one person wishing to speak on an issue, you may want to coordinate with each other about what you're going to talk about, because each side only gets 10 minutes, and you don't want to cover the same information over and over. After that, the board will start to discuss the case at hand. From the discussion, they may ask one or more speakers to come back to the front for additional comments or questions. Then the board will make a decision to either approve, deny, hold, or continue the case at hand. There is one case on today's printed agenda which has been withdrawn without prejudice, and this case will not be heard. That's resounding case Z-43, Sohel Kazani. This case has been withdrawn without prejudice and will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, we did get a request late last week to withdraw other business item number 52 of 2023, and the applicant is Emily Sidney, and the staff had asked the board to withdraw without prejudice, OB number 52.
Okay, Commissioner Burrow.
I make a motion to withdraw-
Is this 52?
Yeah.
Of 2023?
OB 52.
OB 52. Okay.
I make a motion to withdraw OB 52 without prejudice from today's agenda.
Second. All right, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. There are a number of cases on today's printed agenda which have either continued to held, and these cases will not be heard today. First case is resounding case Z-36 of 2023, Mychester, Inc. This case was continued by the staff until the March 19th, 2024 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Z-36 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-40 of 2023, Atlanta Remediation Group LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-40 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-52 of 2023, 1054 Investment Group LLC. This case was continued by staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-52 of 2023 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-57 of 2023, Gordon Todd Spencer. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-57 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-59 of 2023, SS Developers LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so resounding case Z-59 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-60 of 2023, MRE Kent LLC. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-60 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-61 of 2023, David Pearson Communities Incorporated. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-61 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-64 of 2023, Cedar Real Estate Group 4 LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-64 will not be heard today. Resounding case Z-66 of 2023, 41 Parker Toy and Self Storage Incorporated. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Z-66 will not be heard today. LUP 30 of 2023, Donald Perry. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP 30 will not be heard today. LUP 32 of 2023, Julia Welton. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so LUP 32 will not be heard today. SLEP 8 of 2023, 41 Parker Toy and Self Storage, Inc. This case was held by the planning commission until the February 6th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so SLEP 8 of 2023 will not be heard today. Other Business Item Number 40 of 2023, Curly Family Homes LLC. This case was continued by the staff until the February 20th, 2024 Planning Commission zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 40 will not be heard today. And lastly, Other Business Item Number 68 of 2023, Noble Storage LLC, Estate of Dode and Donald K. Nix. This case was continued by the staff until the February 20th, 2024 Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, so Other Business Item Number 68 will not be heard today. Madam Chair and Board, we did get a request over the weekend. The applicant would like to continue Other Business Item Number 66, Chick-fil-A, Inc., until your February 20th hearing date, so the staff would ask the board to continue Other Business Item Number 66.
Commissioner Sheffield.
I make a motion to continue OB 66 to the February Board of Commissioners zoning hearing, and I am trying to find that date.
That's February 20th.
February 20th, excuse me. 2024. Second. Okay, is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five zero. Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you. I would like to ask the folks in today's audience, if you have a cell phone, please put the volume on mute for your cell phone. When the phones ring, it does interfere with the broadcast and presentation. And I want to remind applicants, opposition, or any interested party, that the information is due to this board the Wednesday prior to this hearing date. Any information submitted after the Wednesday due date may or may not be considered by the board at their discretion. Madam Chair and Board, I did get one request for an early head count for a resounding case Z-30, QuickTrip.
Okay.
Are you ready to be counted, Carol? Okay. All those opposed, resounding case Z-30, please stand up, raise their hands. Three.
I see another hand. I see more hands.
Can you stand up and raise your hands, please?
Those who are opposed, please stand up in addition to raising your hand. Thank you.
Okay. Let the record show there's five people here opposed, resounding case Z-30, which is QuickTrip Corporation, and that case will be held later in the agenda. Pardon me? Okay.
Yes.
All those who are in support of resounding case Z-30, please stand up and raise your hands. Three. Okay, let the record show there's three people here in support of resounding case Z-30.
Yes, thank you. Commissioner Burrow.
Can we do a count for Z-15, too?
An early head count.
Okay. Okay, can I get a show of people here who are opposed, resounding case Z-15 of 2023, SDP Acquisitions LLC? Please stand up, raise your hands. Let the record show there's 33 people here opposed, resounding case Z-15. Can I also get a show of people here who are in support of resounding case Z-15? Please stand up, raise your hands. Okay, let the record show there's four people here in support of resounding case Z-15. Four. And with that, Madam Chair, I'm ready to start the consent agenda. Cobb County Board of Commissioners zoning hearing consent agenda for December 19th, 2023. First case on consent is resounding case Z-47 of 2023, Bentley Residential Properties LLC and Summer Hour Properties, LLP. Request rezoning from R-20 and R-15 to LI for landscaping and tree service in Landlot 1137 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Gresham Road and east of Fairview Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-47 to the Light Industrial Zoning District subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plans received by the zoning division on September 6th, 2023, with the district commissioner to approve the final plan. Number two, letter from Mr. George T. Bentley dated November 29th, 2023. Number three, variances as stated in the zoning division comments or recommendations. Number four, reduction of the buffer from required 50 feet to 20 feet adjacent to residential zone property. Number five, applicant to install a 10-foot landscape buffer and/or fencing along the public roads to provide screening. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. And number seven, Department of Transportation comments or recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-47? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Yes, sir. Can I make a clarification to that? That 1330 is incorrect, it's 1302 Gresham.
Okay, we'll just note in the agenda that 1330 is the wrong address. It's 1302 Gresham Road?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just make that correction. All right. Next case is resounding case Z-48 of 2023, Oscar Factory. Request rezoning from PSC to NRC for an office and retail in Landlot 677 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Main Street, west of Lower Street. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-48 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, staff comments and recommendations. And number two, variances as stated in the zoning analysis to be approved. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-48? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-49 of 2023, DG East Cobb Guthrie's LLC. Request rezoning from PSC to NRC for a restaurant in Landlot 69 of the 1st District. The property is located on the south side of Lower Rose Road, west of Johnson Ferry Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-49 to the NRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, applicant to prepare submittal number two traffic study. And number two, staff comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-49? We got two. Okay, let the record show there's two people opposed. So we're going to pull Z-49 off the consent agenda and just put it in its regular agenda spot. Okay, resounding case Z-55 of 2023, Josilio Toledo Cruz. Request a rezoning from NS to R-15 for a single-family residence in Landlot 131 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Zelma Street, west of Pine Tree Lane. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-55 to the R-15 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, construction hours limited Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final architectural elevations. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. And number four, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-55? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-56 of 2023, Joseph Fidelis. Request a rezoning from R-30 to R-20 for a single-family subdivision in Landlot 1173 of the 19th District. The property is located on the west side of Holloman Road and on the south side of Higher and Luthier Springs Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-56 to the R-20 zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division dated July 21st, 2023. Number two, minimum house size shall be 2200 square feet for homes in the proposed development of heated and cooled living space and shall have a minimum two-car garage. Number three, homes in the proposed development shall contain exterior materials of brick, stone, stackstone, cedar shake, board and batten, traditional lap siding, hardy plank, or combinations thereof. Number four, construction hours limited to Monday through Friday from 7:00 a.m. until 6:00 p.m., Saturday and Sunday from 8:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. Number six, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number seven, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number nine, site plan review comments and recommendations. And number 10, planning division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-56? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
I'd like- Yes, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yeah, I'd like to add to revised stip number three to include a sentence that reads, "The final elevations to be approved by the district commissioner."
Okay.
Did the applicant hear the stipulation?
Yeah.
Yes, is the applicant amenable to that?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right. Next case is resounding case Z-58 of 2023, Christian Brothers Automotive Corporation. Request rezoning from GC to LI for heavy automotive repair in Landlot A-69 of the 17th District. The property is located on the north side of Delk Road, west of Paris Ferry Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-58 to the CRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2023, with the district commissioner approving item modifications. Number two, letter of agreeable conditions from Mr. Kevin Moore dated November 27th, 2023. Number three, all vehicles to be parked in striped parking spaces. Number four, any heavy automotive repair be done inside the building. Number five, no outdoor storage of vehicle parts. Number six, no outdoor display of merchandise. Number seven, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number eight, fire department comments and recommendations. Number nine, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number 10, planning division comments and recommendations. Number 11, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number 12, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-58? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-62 of 2023, Racetrack Incorporated. Request a rezoning from GC and NS to CRC for a convenient store of fuel cells in Landlots 948 and 949 of the 17th District. The property is located on the south side of Cobb Parkway, on the east side of Acres Mill Road, at the southeast intersection of Cobb Parkway and Acres Mill Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-62 to the CRC zoning district, subject to the following condition. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2023, with the district commissioner approving the final site plan. Number two, variances as stated in the zoning division comments or recommendations. Number three, fire department comments and recommendations. Number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Number five, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. Number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. Number seven, inclusion on the consent agenda for the Board of Commissioners on December 19th, 2023. And number eight, landscape plan to be approved by the district commissioner. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-62? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Next case is resounding case Z-63 of 2023, Martin Horetta. Request rezoning from R-20 and GC to GC for contractor's office. And that's a specialized contractor who does tree landscaping and also for parking and storage in Landlot 211 of the 17th District. The property is located on the east side of Santown Road, north of Gan Road. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-63 to the GC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Site plan received by the zoning division on October 5th, 2023. Number two, district commissioner to approve the final building elevations. Number three, tree service and landscaping contractor only. Any other use to be approved as an other business item. Number four, applicant indoor owner to install a 10-foot landscape buffer with a 6-foot solid wooden privacy fence along the road frontage. Number five, variances as stated in the zoning division comments and recommendations. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations. Number seven, site plan review comments and recommendations. And number eight, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-63? Let the record show there's no one opposed. Resounding case Z-65 of 2023, The Parkway 750 Kennesaw LLC and The Parkway 760 Kennesaw LLC. Request rezoning from CRC to RRC for a mixed-use development consisting of apartments and a hotel in Landlots 651 and 718 of the 16th District. The property is located at the terminus of Cobb Place Boulevard, east of Ernest Bear Parkway. The planning commission recommends approval of Z-65 to the RRC zoning district, subject to the following conditions. Number one, no rentals of 30 days or less permitted for the apartments. And number two, staff comments and recommendations. The applicant's representative is present. Is there anyone here opposed, resounding case Z-65? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into land use permits on the consent agenda. First one is LUP 27 of 2023, Marlene Graham. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for a personal care home in Landlot 561 of the 16th District. The property is located on the north side of Piedmont Road, west of Shaw Road. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 27 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, site plan received by the zoning division on September 25th, 2023. Number two, fire department comments and recommendations. Number three, water and sewer division comments and recommendations. And number four, stormwater management division comments and recommendations. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, LUP 27? Let the record show there's no one opposed.
Commissioner Burrow.
I just want to say thank you to Ms. Graham who's here today. She is a prime example of how a group home should run. Her yard is impeccable, her maintenance on her building, everything is really nice on Piedmont. I live around the corner, and I go by there every day, and I'm just proud of how well she has kept up that, her facility and her home. Thank you.
Okay, next case is LUP 28 of 2023, Karen Gooden. Request a temporary land use permit renewal for Harris Lawn in Landlots 622 and 637 of the 19th District. The property is located at the terminus of Foxcroft Court, east of Valleybrook Drive. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 28 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, hours of operation to be from 10:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m. Monday, Thursday, and Friday only. Number two, all parking to be on a hardened surface. Number three, applicant to be the only employee, no independent contractors. And number four, staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed, the LUP 28? Let the record show there's no one opposed. LUP 31 of 2023, Thago Santos. Request a temporary land use permit renewal to allow outdoor photography in Landlots 103 and 126 of the 20th District. The property is located on the north side of Old 41 Highway, west of Kimberly Road. The planning commission recommends approval of LUP 31 for 24 months, subject to the following conditions. Number one, final site plan received by the zoning division on October 4th, 2023. Number two, maximum of two employees. Number three, one sign up to six square feet. Number four, clients by appointment only, with a maximum of three clients per day. Number five, fire department comments and recommendations. And number six, Department of Transportation comments and recommendations. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed, the LUP 31? Let the record show there's no one opposed. And moving into other business cases on the consent agenda. First case we're going to hear is other business item- First case we're going to hear is other business item number fifty-six of two thousand and twenty-three, which is to consider a reduction of public road frontage from seventy-five feet to zero feet for tracks two, three, and five, to waive the impervious buffer on track two and to allow setback and location variances for the, for the existing sheds on tracks four and six for Justin K. Willis, for property located on the north side of Turnstone Drive in landlot one forty-five of the twentieth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, uh, stipulation letter from Mr. Ernest J. Campbell III dated December thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-three, which includes, uh, the site plan dated September twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three, with the district commissioner approval of minor modifications. Number two, no further subdivision of the property. Number three, the request for the impervious setback, uh, reduction on track two is removed from this request. Number four, stormwater management comments contained in the other business packet. Number five, site plan review comments contained in the other business packet. Number six, fire department comments contained in the other business packet. And number seven, COV DOT comments contained in the other business packet. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number fifty-six?
Yes, Commissioner Gable.
I would just like to add another condition, um, that in the stipulation letter they specified some DOT, um, requirements that they were agreeable to do, but they did not stipulate all of staff comments, that all of staff comments must be followed regardless of the stipulation letter dated twelve thirteen of two thousand and twenty-three.
Okay. So help me understand, are they stipulating something that is in contrast to staff recommendations?
They, they, they chose a couple DOT comments, but they did not take all of DOT comments to incorporate them into their stipulation letter.
Okay.
And we are now having problems with, um, applicants saying that stipulation controls over staff comments. And I just want to make sure that even though the stipulation says one thing, staff comments remain controlling.
Okay, are we including a statement that all staff comments would be included that aren't in conflict?
Yes, I think Commissioner Gable is concerned that, that the letter would, would supersede, supersede the staff comments, but she wants staff comments to, to be the ones that control the property.
May I have the applicant please approach?
Good morning, Commissioners.
Thank you and good morning. Um, I'll let Commissioner Gable, um, clarify her stipulation, just want to make sure that you understand it and are amenable to it as this is part of our consent agenda.
Yes, ma'am.
Sure, just in your stipulation letter, and I don't have it in front of me, but you had specified a few of DOT comments that you were willing to do, and I'm just asking that you do all of staff comments that were provided to you in the review.
Yes, ma'am, understood. The DOT comments that we would be agreeable to don't include a public road being built. Uh, the, one of the core tenants, the design of, uh, one of the core tenants of the site plan incorporates a shared private driveway and not a public road.
Correct, but part of DOT's comments were to allow you to build a private road, but it had to be done to DOT standards. I don't have the list in front of me, but there were just a couple of the DOT comments that you had left out. So, again, as long, we understand it's going to be a private road, but are you agreeable to all of DOT comments and recommendations?
By saying we would be agreeable to all comments as they're written, that would include a public street. So there may be a question as to, uh, specific definitions of the, the, the road to be built, but we did agree to build the, uh, shared private driveway, uh, to the DOT standards, uh, I believe it's, uh, one sixteen R for the residential driveway.
Right, and, and DOT agreed to that. So I'm, I'm agreeable to that, but I just want to make sure that all DOT standards, knowing that it's a private road, are upheld.
Okay, I think you're in agreement from what I'm hearing.
Yes, ma'am, there's this difference between a private road and a private driveway.
We're on a consent agenda, which is typically a brief review and summary of the cases. Again, I'm not exactly sure there's a meeting of the minds here.
May I suggest we put this one on hold right now, we let them talk to DOT, and then we can bring it back either later, put it on, leave it on consent, or just have, or just have a hearing on it.
Let's do that. In fact, we have a number of people here on consent. Why don't we go ahead and take about a five-minute break during that time? And perhaps there's some, um, communication that can occur with you and DOT before we begin our regular agenda.
Okay.
And then we may have opportunity to put you back on consent at that point.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
All right, so just put that one on hold and just talk to our DOT representative over here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next case is resounding case, or excuse me, is other business case, uh, other business item number sixty-two of two thousand and twenty-three, which is to consider a reduction of public road frontage from seventy-five feet to fifty feet for track three for Melissa Jones for property located at the southern end of Leah Lane in landlots one oh-nine, one-ten, and one-twenty-three of the eighteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to track three to be approved for fifty feet of public road frontage. And number two, COV DOT comments. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number sixty-two? Okay, let the record show there's no one opposed. Other business item number sixty-four of two thousand and twenty-three is to consider amending the site plan stipulations for Gabe Reeve regarding rezoning application Z thirty-five of two thousand and nine for property located on the north side of Lower Lake Drive and on the west side of Billis Ferry Road in landlot seven thirteen of the sixteenth district. Staff recommends approval, subject to the following conditions. Number one, the approved site plan is the nineteen ninety-nine plan titled Lower Lake Subdivision, contained in the other business packet. Number two, maximum of nine lots that are a minimum of twenty thousand square feet each. Number three, all homes to be for sale with no rentals and be owner occupied for single-family use only. Number four, homes to be eighteen hundred square feet to twenty-two hundred square feet or greater. Number five, maximum of thirty-five percent impervious per lot. Number six, fire department comments or recommendations contained in the other business packet. Number seven, COV DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number eight, all previous stipulations from the two thousand and five settlement litigation, uh, which was other business item number one, not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. Is the applicant present? Let the record show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number sixty-four? Got one opposed, so we'll pull that one off the consent agenda and put it in its regular order, Madam Chairman, Board.
Thank you, John. Commissioners, are there any other matters that you would like pulled up to consent? Commissioner Gable.
Uh, yes, John, um, I'd like to pull O B sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-three onto consent.
Okay, let me go ahead and read that one into the record.
If you could, please.
Okay, other business item number sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-three is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Pogue Shopping Centers LLC regarding rezoning application Z one thirty-nine of nineteen ninety-nine, property located on the south side of Dallas Highway in landlot three thirty-three of the twentieth district. Is the applicant present? Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number sixty-five? Uh, Madam Chairman, Board, there's no one opposed to this application.
Okay, thank you, so we'll pull O B sixty-five to the consent agenda. Any other matter to be pulled to consent?
Before we pull it to the consent agenda, um, John, I understand there was a meeting yesterday and an agreement was made. If we could read that agreement into the record, please.
Okay. Staff would recommend approval of the request, subject to the fire department comments contained in the other business packet, subject to the COV DOT comments contained in the other business packet. The Architecture Patrol Committee to review the plan for the elevations with the district commissioner approving the final elevations prior to any permits, including the demolition permit. And lastly, all previous conditions not in conflict remain in effect.
Thank you. Bill, just for clarification, as we move this to consent prior to approving consent, is a motion needed?
Motion.
Yes, motion is needed, no word added to the consent agenda.
Okay, Commissioner, if you can make that motion, please.
So I'd like to make a motion to add O B sixty-five of two thousand and twenty-three to the consent agenda as presented by John Pearson. Second.
Is there any further discussion? Commissioner Gable?
And also if the clerk can record my statement. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Broll, would you like something similar referred to?
Submit my statement.
Okay.
He can also.
Okay, are there any other comments? Call the question. The motion passes five-zero, thank you. Are there any other cases, Commissioners, to be added to the consent agenda before we approve it? Okay, with that, Commissioners, I move that we approve the consent agenda as it has been revised, recognizing that both Z forty-nine and other business item sixty-four will be moved to the regular part of our meeting.
Second.
Is there any further discussion?
And also O B fifty-six, we need to have the conversation with DOT.
That's being held for consent, thank you, Commissioner. Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll go ahead and call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you for all of our applicants who are on the consent agenda. If your matter has not been moved to the regular agenda or it has not been held, you are free to leave at this time. Thank you for being here and have a wonderful holiday. For those of you who will remain, we'll go ahead and take a break until nine forty-five. Before we do go into our agenda, I do want to acknowledge that it is our commission district or district commissioners' birthday. Commissioner Burrow, if we can all just tell her happy birthday before we resume our agenda.
Happy birthday.
Before we get to my controversial cases.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right, John, if you can help us.
Okay, and before we start the next case, the last other business item that we put off consent, we went back and talked to the person who opposed, and they're no longer opposed to it. So if it was okay with the board, I'm going to read it back into the agenda and we just make a motion to add it back to consent.
And then make a motion to approve.
Okay, which number is this?
OB-64.
Okay, go ahead, John.
With my OB-56, the applicant or the representative is talking with the property owner, and if we can have another break before we end the meeting, we'll see if that got resolved.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so other business item number 64 of 2023 is to consider amending the site plan stipulations for Gabe Harib regarding rezoning applications, Z-35 of 2009 for property located on the north side of Lower Lake Drive and on the west side of Bells Ferry Road in Land Lot 713 of the 16th District. Staff recommends approval. Subject number one, the approved site plan is the 1999 plan titled Lower Lake Subdivision contained in the other business packet. Number two, maximum nine lots that are 20,000 square feet each. Number three, all homes to be for sale with no rentals and be owner occupied for single-family use only. Number four, homes to be 1,800 square feet to 2,200 square feet or greater. Number five, maximum 35% impervious per lot. Number six, fire department comments and recommendations contained in the other business packet. Number seven, Cobb DOT comments contained in the other business packet. And number eight, all previous stipulations from the 2005 settlement litigation, which was other business number one, not in conflict with this amendment to remain in effect. The applicant is present. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 64? And let's record, there's no one opposed?
Thank you. And for our county attorney, just for clarification, we're moving to approve this, not necessarily to add this to consent, or do we need to add this to consent and then have a second motion to approve?
The latter.
Okay. Thank you. So Commissioner, if you can help us with the motion to add this to consent?
I make a motion to add OB-64, to approve OB-64, no, to add it to consent.
Yes, thank you. Can we get a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. Thank you, commissioners. And Commissioner Burrow, if you can also give, provide us a motion for approval.
Okay. Make a motion to approve OB-64 as read.
Approve the consent agenda as revised.
And approve the consent agenda as revised.
As revised, yes.
Thank you, Bill.
Just a second. Second.
Is there any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. First case we're going to hear today is rezoning case Z-15 of 2023. SDP Acquisitions LLC request a rezoning from R-20, RA-4, GC, O-N-I, NS, OS to PVC and OS for mixed use, which includes townhomes, multifamily, office, retail, wholesale, distribution, and landlots, landlots 364, 365, 428, 429 for the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Chastain Road and on the west side of Chastain Meadows Parkway. The applicant is present, and earlier there's 33 people who are opposed and four in support. All those people in the audience who want to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
Whenever you're ready, Kevin.
Good morning, Madam Chair and Board of Commissioners. I'm Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant, SDP Acquisitions, in this rezoning application. The property we're here to discuss today for your consideration is just over 57 acres. It's located at the intersection of Chastain Road, Chastain Meadows Parkway, as well as along I-575 interchange of 575 and Chastain Road. You can see that on your screen where that property is located. Turning to the site plan itself, if, as you was heard from Mr. Peterson, this property is currently zoned, this 57-plus acres is currently zoned to a mixed bag handful of zoning categories, including office services, including general commercial, including R-20, RA-4, and O-N-I, and neighborhood shopping. So just about any of those categories in our list, this property has it. What we're proposing with SDP acquisitions is proposing for your consideration is to rezone the property to PVC for 27 acres that would be located on your site plan, which you see on your screen, along the top, which is Chastain Road. To the left is I-575. 27 acres is proposed for rezoning to the PVC category, and the remaining 30 acres is proposed for rezoning to office services. And I'm going to go through that plan with you and kind of highlight for you what this plan contains and what is being proposed. For the PVC section that will be present along Chastain Road, what is proposed first is a retail restaurant plaza containing approximately 25,000 square feet of retail and restaurant, which is badly needed for that specific area, and which was very much requested throughout the numerous, numerous meetings that we had with the community and community members to include that aspect of having a retail restaurant plaza. You can see how that's oriented in the center of the PVC at the top of your screen. We will then propose, are proposing a maximum of 135 residential townhomes. That has since been, that has been reduced. Initially, it was proposed at nearly 150. It came down to 145, 140, and now it's being proposed at a total maximum of 135 townhomes. Also, to the left of that screen is an age-restricted apartment building that will have a maximum of 200 units that will be included as part of this overall PVC. So you have a nice mixture of residential homes, as well as the presence of the retail, significant presence of a retail restaurant aspect with a plaza, all interconnected as a PVC should be. To the south of that, as you come along Chastain Meadows, which only has access to Chastain Meadows, is the proposed office services. We have three proposed buildings. Of the three buildings, total, no more than 365,000 square feet. The building on the right-hand side of your screen, which faces out to Chastain Meadows, is the smallest building of 105,000 square feet, and the other two range from 118, maximum, to 140,000 square feet. You'll see the little finger in the middle of that. That is an extreme area that we will be incorporating into the PVC and for use for the residents, and incorporates walking trails, and will be a part of a passive amenity feature for the residents of the PVC. In addition, from the recommendation from your planning commission, what has been incorporated into this plan? First and foremost, we have along the left-hand side, adjacent to I-575, we have incorporated a tree safe buffer area, a minimum of 20 feet in width, with an additional landscape buffer area of 20 feet. That has been incorporated into this plan. In terms of highlighting other stipulations that we think are extremely important for this plan, we also have, as it relates to the office services, which has been a source of contention, of issue, and discussion, we have agreed to a limitation on the number of docks, dock doors available for use for those buildings. That limitation would be at only one dock door per 6,000 square feet of space for each building. What does that mean? Kind of, what does that tell you for the area as a whole? The average square footage of docks per OS building in the areas around 3,500 square feet, we're almost double that. So it severely and substantially limits the number of dock doors available for use by these OS, by the OS buildings. Turning again to the actual, what does this going to look like? We have the townhomes. Want to show you what townhomes are being proposed for this section that will work as part of the overall PVC plan. And when I go back to this plan, those townhomes, you'll see back up to a long skinny green space along this plan, but it's not really that skinny. And staff's recommendation for approval of this rezoning application, staff recommended a 50-foot buffer between that townhome section of the PVC and ROS. What we have proposed is double that, a 100-foot wide landscaped and burned, fully landscaped and treed and burned buffer between these two uses, because what we're trying to do is provide for the transition of land uses between OS with the PVC and the townhomes and the retail across Chastain Road to Chastain Lake Subdivision, which is single-family, and thereby we're providing the transition that's not been provided before for what is a dominant OS area up to Chastain Road. And that's why we can, or have the ability to build. The quality of townhomes we're building here with the quality of builder that we're building here is because of the idea of having the transition and ensuring that we have a very substantial buffer. This is, these are the photos of the proposed four-story senior age-restricted units that will be present. You can see the quality of what's being proposed there. And lastly, turning to the office services, which has been, again, a source of discussion. This is our rendering of office services. That's Chastain Meadows, and you can see how those will look from Chastain Meadows in terms of their overall scale and in terms of their overall fitability. And that comes down to a question here in terms of the fitability. Let's look at what is Chastain Meadows as it relates to this office services section. When you look at Chastain Meadows Parkway from Chastain Road, that's this picture, that's the zoning map. At the top, you see Chastain Road and then Chastain Meadows right through the center. On the left-hand top of our side is our 57 acres. What is dominant about Chastain Meadows is it's all zoned office services from Chastain Road past Big Shanty. And I'll show you when it gets past Big Shanty. That's Big Shanty at the top, and Chastain Meadows continues on. All office services throughout that entire corridor. Now back to our property. And you can see the buildings, and I'll flip back and forth so that you can really see. You can see the buildings that are office services buildings all along Chastain Meadows, past Big Shanty, almost all the way to Piedmont Barrett Parkway. Large office service buildings. This is zoned office services throughout Chastain Meadows. Chastain Meadows was built in the 90s for this purpose, for office services types of uses in buildings, which is what we're proposing, not on the full 57 acres to go all the way to Chastain Road, but only on 30 acres going back to our site plan. Again, there's our proposed office services buildings, completely consistent with the zonings that have been approved and the developments that have been approved along this corridor. Now, one of the things that I want to go back to it again is this reduction in dock doors, because what we've heard over and over again is a concern from the community to prohibit what's known as last mile distribution. These, what we have proposed now with the limitation on dock doors really takes us out of having last mile distribution as a use. We still have office services uses. We still have other office service buildings throughout this entire corridor who have multiple dock doors without those types of restrictions. We have this particular area of office services that, as shown on your land use map, is within a community activity center. But interestingly enough, as was noted in the planning commission, office services is not consistent with a community activity center, and we readily admit that, so does staff. But the difference here is that for the last 25 years, Cobb County has approved OS office services within this community activity center, which have been built, which are existing, to then deny this application and deny OS service, office services zoning in this instance, from our standpoint, is indefensible. Cobb County, for 25 years, has approved office services along Chastain Meadows, adjacent and surrounding this property, while this area, specific area, has been within a community activity center. Office services at our location, on the southerly end of our property, is entirely appropriate. The other concern has been traffic. We heard it over and over again. This project went through a DRI and went through a substantial review by Cobb DOT. Throughout that process, the Georgia Regional Transportation Authority reviewed this in detail with multiple traffic studies. So did Cobb County DOT. So did our professional traffic engineer. Each of those professionals noted that with the traffic improvements that we are providing, there is not a negative impact to the level of service in this area, so no negative traffic impact due to the traffic improvements that have been agreed to. To suggest otherwise is not informed and not supported. Respect the request, your approval of this application. Thank you.
Thank you. We will now hear from opposition.
Good morning, commissioners. My name is Tolan Abar, and I'm here with the Bells Ferry Civic Association. I'm here representing area subdivisions and residents. Even though it's a holiday season, 33 people here today put their hands up in opposition, and out of 49 people who submitted comments on the county zoning portal, 45 of them asked you to deny this rezoning request. The BFCA is opposed to the fact that the OS does not belong in a CAC, the intensity and zero lot lines in the PVC, deforestation of the entire site causing increased noise, air, and visual pollution, and the increased commercial traffic this development will generate. Over the course of 11 site plans changes, the PVC area shrunk to the minimal allowable of 25 acres, and the new OS area grew in size. The community was promised a village green and outdoor amphitheater to be used as a community gathering spot to create a viable live, work, and play community. This has now been replaced with a concrete plaza feature, and the townhomes have no amenities for the residents. The entire PVC is too intense with zero lot lines for the townhomes and retail components. And what definition is being used for green space? And how does it differ from pervious space, which has not been divulged? Clearcutting 57 undeveloped wooded acres is unacceptable to us. This is one of the last forested areas in District 3, and to clearcut would cause a massive heat island. Having a large established wooded area is an asset and needs to be incorporated into the site plan. Some barriers had to be added to this area because interstate traffic noise already exceeded NAC impact threshold noise levels of 66 decibels in 2017. Almost 100,000 vehicles travel past this piece of property on a daily basis. Intense deforestation will cause drainage erosion and sedimentation concerns, as well as noise, air, and visual pollution to the PVC and surrounding neighborhoods. This county needs to ensure that some sort of protection is left in place for area residents. The ARC DRI's report was critical of the proposed development and pointed out that the project was not aligned in several key areas. As stated in the report, quote, "retention of additional wooded areas, including a substantial buffer along I-575, would be supportive of regional environmental policies, as well as the county's green print plan for conserving land of environmental value," end quote. In addition, the county's Code of Ordinances, Section 50-219, also addresses the importance of protecting trees. Please abide by the various codes and recommendations. The applicant asserts that these buildings will be OS-related, like those nearby. How even? Even their own site plans have labeled the buildings industrial warehouses. The existing OS buildings have a max 24 clear height, whereas these will be 32, which is eight feet higher, and they will operate 24/7. In addition, they will be three stories tall and larger in size than the majority of existing buildings in the area. The applicant's loading dock analysis was prepared by the applicant themselves and was shown not to be accurate at the PC meeting because it counted possible dock doors and not the existing dock doors and current uses. It's important to note that the area along Chastain Meadows delineated as an office park does not include the Z-15 parcel, as shown in the 1984 rezoning document. It has been pointed out by the county that the Stormwater Agreement with the Kepler family business also does not include this parcel. This property is owned by both the Kepler and McKemey entities, and the majority of the property is currently zoned residential NOI. It was never meant to be zoned OS. The BOC originally established a CAC here to, quote, "protect environmentally sensitive properties," end quote. Two years ago, an Amazon distribution center was erroneously given permission to be built on the corner of Chastain Meadows and Big Shanty, adjacent to Z-15, without any public input. Due to an economic downturn, Amazon pulled out. However, Scannell is now clearcutting the land to build two massive 440,000 square feet speculative warehouses with a multitude of truck-loading docks. These buildings are supposed to be office service only, but clearly they are not, and Scannell admits that they are industrial warehouses, which is shown on the slide. That's how they're advertised. And according to code, this is only allowed in industrial area, not here. Those warehouses will generate over 2,000 commercial vehicle traffic a day. How can our roads handle all these trucks? Allowing OS as well as industrial- Allowing OS as well as industrial warehouses in a non-industrial area in a CAC was a violation of county code, and yet there are no repercussions. We do not want the same thing to happen with these warehouses with Z-15. The two Scannell warehouses will be larger than the applicant's three warehouses, which according to their traffic analysis will generate over 2,000 vehicle trips a day. So if Z-15 is approved combined, there will be almost a million square feet of speculative warehouse space resulting in over 4,000 commercial vehicles a day traveling area roads. Although there is some commercial development to the south, this area is surrounded by residential developments to the north and east, a church immediately across Chastain Road, KSU's main campus to the west, including thousands of student off-campus apartments, and KSU football stadium, which hosts a multitude of college events throughout the year. The truck traffic will bring increased danger to residents with not only the probability of accidents, but air pollution from diesel trucks, what will happen when the roads are closed for KSU events. Certainly not needed are more intense commercial entities to compete with area residents and students who travel this corridor daily by car, as well as by foot and bike for work and to access transit and trails. The addition of these commercial buildings will add thousands of heavy vehicle truck traffic daily into a mix, creating a dangerous traffic flow situation to the immediate area, including the arterial roads of Big Shanty, Chastain Meadows, and Chastain Roads, which are in dire need of repair, and there's no funding to widen the remaining stretch of Big Shanty Road. In addition, there are already over 60 dump trucks traversing these roads daily. It would be impossible for area roads to accommodate all the additional heavy truck traffic and cause safety issues. This proposed development is delineated within a CAC, not a RAC, in the future land use map. A community activity center provides for areas that can meet the immediate needs of several neighborhoods or communities. Typical land uses for these areas include low-to-mid-rise office buildings and stores. It is meant to serve the local community and thus minimize traffic congestion. Compatible zoning districts in a CAC do not include OS. The fact that the OS category being requested is not compliant with a CAC was brought to the PC's attention on December 5th and affirmed by the county attorney, Brian Johnson. The planning and zoning department failed to note this conflict in the zoning code and erroneously recommended approval under Z-15 staff comments. In the proposed Unified Development Code draft, which will soon update the current 50-year-old antiquated zoning regulations, OS has been taken completely out of commercial and office category and renamed office service industrial. This is a reflection of the true and current nature of OS. The UDC no longer mentions distribution facilities, distribution centers, office services, or warehouses, since they can and have been used interchangeably as in this current case. The county acknowledges that the current OS category is outdated and thus OS is already inappropriate for this rezoning case, since this area is not industrial nor in a RAC. Additional housing options would be a much better fit and conformed to county code. Cobb County is lacking in housing, not warehouses. There are currently over 85 available warehouse listings for rent in Cobb. The ARC projects Cobb will have 1 million residents by 2050, and more housing is needed to accommodate that growth. Currently, this zoning proposal does not meet the Steinbach Act minimum requirements. As warehouses and clearcutting the property would adversely affect existing use of adjacent nearby properties, the commercial buildings will cause an excessive and brisome use of existing streets with a daily addition of thousands of commercial vehicles, and this case certainly does not conform to the long-range land use plan. One of the alternative motions put forth by Planning Commissioner Dance was to approve Z-15 but deny the OS district and instead rezone the entire property to a PVC. We agree with removing the incompatible OS district, but should this be the motion, we ask that stipulations be added to ensure that safeguards are in place, including no more than five units per acre in order to conform with the CAC, all recommendations from the ARC DRI report be incorporated into the site plan, and any revised site plan be brought back to the BOC as other business item to give the public the opportunity to participate in the development of their community. The board has agreed to similar requests in the past, and we ask that the same consideration is given to this rezoning case. We present a compelling argument as to legally why this case should be denied. This is not an industrial area. This is a residential corridor with established subdivisions that were here long before any of the commercial entities. For the applicant, who is from out of the county, this is just another project, but for us, this area is home, and this development will have an impact on our quality of life, safety, health, and home values. Therefore, we respectfully ask that you deny this case in its entirety and keep the existing zoning as it is now until another rezoning case is filed. Thank you for your time.
And with that, we'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to say that we had over 62 emails in opposition to this case, and I know there's 33 here today in opposition. We've had several meetings and discussions with the community, Bells Ferry Civic, Chastain Lakes, Brookhaven of East Cobb. This area from east of 575 on Chastain, the industrial or the CAC is encroaching on neighborhoods and the ones I just mentioned. And we know something's going to go here, but it needs to be right. The planning commission's recommendation to do PVC over the total 57-plus acres would be my recommendation as well. I don't think that that can be done today, and I know the applicant asked for a continuance, but I think since this has been going on from May to now, that we needed to hear it and have the opposition give their comments. And I'd also like to enter for the record Section 134-223, OS Office Service District, and the regulations and the purpose and intent, which specifically states that OS is not compatible in a CAC. And I'd like to give that to the clerk for the record. So what I'd like to do today is hold this case until our February meeting, give the applicant time to come back with all PVC site plan, no variances, right in, right out on Chastain Meadows, other recommendations that I'd like to make, some of which you heard from the opposition today. I do have a couple of questions before I make a motion or ask for any other discussion. Will they need to do another DRI or traffic study for the change in the use?
Please, Leahy, if you can approach the mic.
Because we can't hear you.
As far as the DRI, they will have to get with ARC about it. With us, we just want to make sure that the traffic generation of the new use will be compatible and will not enhance the mitigation that we need to be concerned about, but it sounds like it will be doable from my perspective.
Okay, what about a traffic study? Will that change?
They will have to upgrade the trip generation, yes.
You don't have any other questions for DRT? Okay, thank you.
Let me just point out that that will only affect the driveway D, basically, because it's the only one that was using the OS traffic, right? That's the only site, the only driveway that had use of the vehicle, the heavy vehicles was driveway D. So it might be doable within, from now until February, for them to upgrade or update the traffic study to show us that.
So are you saying February may not be enough time to update it?
I think it will be.
Okay.
It's up to the applicant.
Yeah, I guess I need to ask the applicant the same.
Yes, Commissioner.
Well, the DRI, and John Peterson, I don't know if you can add into this conversation, but I know the DRI has...
Excuse me, I'm sorry, we're using a lot of acronyms. If you can help clarify.
Well, I would like John Peterson to weigh in possibly, because on the DRI, which is the development of regional impact, there are different thresholds that the DRI has based on the project. So depending on how they come out with housing, would that then throw it back to requiring another DRI?
It's possible, Commissioner Gamero, depending on what density they bring back. You know, if they bring back five units an acre on the rest of the PVC, maybe not. If it's much higher than that, say, over 10, then they may need another review or re-review. But until we actually see a plan from the developer, it's hard to say at this point in time.
And how long does a DRI usually take to go through the process?
Usually takes about 60 days.
Thank you.
Okay, and what about an updated traffic study?
I would say about the same. And if they do the DRI, then that will be the part of, that will be our review. We will be participating in that review.
Can I ask Mr. Moore to come back up? Are you prepared to do another traffic study and potentially another DRI?
If we need to, yes. We would be able to do that pretty quickly with the Atlanta Regional Commission, ARC, which conducts and manages the developments of regional impact. You can do an expedited review with them, especially on one they've already reviewed. So it actually can be completed in 30 days, once they have a plan.
Okay. And then the revised site plan, which would take the full 57-plus acres to all PVC zone, PVC, 60 days is enough for you to meet with the public and me and come up with a revised site plan for PVC?
Yes, that's sufficient, Tom.
Okay. Then I'm prepared to make the motion.
Yes, Commissioner.
Do you have any other questions?
I don't, for Kevin. But in your motion, are you going to suggest a density for this development? Because I know the opposition mentioned five units per acre.
In a CAC.
I don't know what the applicant might be suggesting, but that sounds that it'll be like the next area of contention. So are you going to suggest?
Yeah, and that would be conforming to the requirements for the CAC, correct, John? For PVC in a CAC?
I'm taking a look right now. You know, for what they have shown on the current plan for the residential, they're showing 14.69 units per acre on existing PVC that's currently in. So I'm going to guess that the density on the balance of the PVC would probably be close to that. You know, it's probably going to be a mixture of more townhomes and maybe some apartments, I would guess.
That's, well, that's going to be hard to do, to put a cap when there's not a requirement,
You have time to weigh this.
Yeah, I'd like to see what they come back with to see, and have input from the community, of course, to see what, before I put restrictions like that. I mean, because I don't know, if they're spreading out over the whole 57 acres, that's going to make a difference on what's proposed. But I still, of course, don't want any variances, and I want buffers along 575 and Chastain Meadows and Chastain Road. So with the revised site plan, I'll have to see what comes back and get input, of course, from... I just don't think I can recommend them looking at five units per acre, but I don't know what, as a recommendation, I can't really put restrictions on it at this level until it comes back and we review everything. So I would like to make a motion to hold Z-15 to the February 20th BOC zoning hearing and direct the applicant to come back with a revised site plan to be zoned PVC for the entire 57-plus acres, no variances, trees along Chastain Meadows to remain, landscape plan and buffers along 575 and Chastain, recommendations from ARC and the DRI report be incorporated or updated, and traffic plan as well. And meetings with the public and myself to review prior to the February 20th zone hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioner.
Okay, next item is rezoning case Z-30 of 2023. QuickTrip Corporation requests rezoning from GC to NRC for convenience store of fuel sales in Land Lot 60 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Jamerson Road and on the west side of Canton Road. The effin' is present. Earlier, there was five people here in support, I mean, five people here opposed and three people in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Yes, John, because there's a lot of noise with the number of people clearing, just ask that we wait a few minutes before we move forward with this next case.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. And if you can repeat the case that we're getting ready to review, please.
Rezoning case Z-30 of 2023. QuickTrip Corporation requests rezoning from GC to NRC for convenience store of fuel sales in Land Lot 60 of the 16th District. The property is located on the south side of Jamerson Road and on the west side of Canton Road. Earlier, there was five people here opposed and three in support. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Okay, Kevin, you can begin whenever you're ready.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Again, Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant, QuickTrip Corporation, in this application for rezoning. A little bit about this property for your consideration. You can see on your screen, this property is at the intersection of two major roads, Canton Road and Jamerson Road. It is currently zoned general commercial, GC. As you can see, many of the surrounding properties are currently zoned general commercial. However, this particular intersection is within a neighborhood activity center on your future land use plan. And in order to kind of give you some context, you're familiar with it, but others may not be, and that is when GC, which is one of our original zoning categories under the Cobb zoning ordinance, was phased out in the 90s as a category. As part of that, general commercial properties, even if they were developed as general commercial, that are located within neighborhood activity centers such as this, if they come back in for redevelopment, which is what's being proposed here, they have to come in and come before this board to be rezoned consistent with the future land use plan, which is what we're providing today. QuickTrip Corporation is here to propose rezoning to the neighborhood retail commercial, NRC zoning category, just like the parcel to our south that came in and was rezoned to NRC for it. to NRC for its redevelopment. This particular neighborhood activity center is a rather intensive neighborhood activity center. There are convenience stores with fuel sales on the other corners of this intersection. In addition, this particular area, while it was developed as GC in the 60s, 70s, and 80s, it was developed to a pretty intense GC general commercial level, which has major contractors' offices and other pretty, very intense commercial types of uses that you don't normally associate with a, quote, "neighborhood activity center." In other words, a QuickTrip location here at this intersection is an ideal, it's a perfect location, for a convenience store of fuel sales, especially given the fact that we are proposing rezoning to NRC. A convenience store of fuel sales is a permitted use under NRC, and it's certainly appropriate at this location. I'm just going to turn to the site plan and go through with you a couple of other aspects Turning to the site plan, it gets flipped up, the north-south gets flipped, but this is Jamerson Road on the bottom, Canton Road here going along the left-hand side. This would involve the demolition of the existing building. The existing building was a Rite Aid building, a Rite Aid pharmacy, which, as you know, has vacated and no longer is in business. And as a result, this particular property has had no activity, no use, and has not been open, has been dark for a number of years. QuickTrip would propose to demolish and build a new QuickTrip convenience store with fuel sales at this location. In terms of access, we have a right-in, right-out off of Jamerson Road, which is restricted, right-in, right-out. There is also an access on Canton Road that is shared with our adjoining owner. That was the owner and property, so it's identified as NRC on the site plan, and we have been in discussions with that owner. This is a shared Canton Road access point that's shared by a recorded access agreement with these two properties, and that access serves both properties. Importantly, as it relates to this particular case, we have been in discussions with that adjacent owner for a number of months and have come to an agreement and want to make sure that is stated, have come to an agreement with that adjacent owner whereby we're going to enter into a parking agreement with that adjacent owner whereby QuickTrip will be providing for additional dedicated parking spaces on the QuickTrip property, as well as doing some additional work on the adjacent owner's property with their parking and parking lot. We would offer that also as a zoning condition, which was explained and also offered at the Planning Commission, that a zoning condition would be that QuickTrip would enter into a parking agreement with that adjoining neighbor as part of any type of zoning approval here. In terms of the outline and layout of the site, here is the main QuickTrip convenience store, and this location is where the canopy and pumps would be. This site plan and throughout the pendency of this application has shown a total of what are eight pumps, but meaning really there's 16 total pumps, as each of them are doubled and back-to-back. Throughout our discussions that we've had even as recently, we have agreed to a reduction in the total number of pumps from 16 to 12, which reduces the actual physical locations from eight to six. And part of that's just to assist with in the concern of circulation throughout this site and ensuring that there's proper circulation throughout the site, and well as to address any potential traffic impact through these two access points as well. So those are two additional stipulations that go with our stipulation letter that we are offering today. Number one, that is only a condition that we would have entered into agreement with the adjoining owner. I can say, for the record, and for you and Mr. Jordan, the attorney for the owner will also confirm this, that we have entered into that agreement with the adjacent owner. It has been memorialized, it has not been signed, but we have gone through and actually written that document out and have agreed to what it says in the language and so forth. So, but we want to make sure that's a zoning condition and not just left to the private parties as well. In addition, we have agreed to a reduction to the maximum number of pumps from 16 to 12, so it would be a maximum number of gas pumps of 12 at this particular location. Again, just to remind you, this property is zoned general commercial, but cannot be used until this board takes action to rezon the property consistent with the future land use plan. That is what your ordinance says, and that's what we're bringing you. All your ordinance says is that the Board of Commissioners is to rezon the property consistent with the land use plan. That's the ordinance, that's the requirement. And that's what QuickTrip has brought to you today, and that is a rezoning application proposing to rezon the property to neighborhood retail commercial, NRC, consistent with the neighborhood activity center, consistent with the future land use plan with no variances. We respectfully request your approval of this rezoning application, and I'll have the remainder of my time for Mr. Lawton Jordan, Attorney for the neighboring owner, to simply confirm so that you can hear from him directly and not just through me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good morning. I'm Lawton Jordan. I'm the attorney for the adjoining property owner. As Mr. Moore said, we are in support of this application, provided the condition he referenced is incorporated, that a shared parking agreement is memorialized and recorded, and an amendment to the easement is recorded between the parties. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Okay, not seeing any. Well, oh, excuse me.
Good afternoon, good morning. For the record, my name is Parks Office of the Law Firm, Sam Zlak and Huffin. I represent the property owner who's owned this for several years and had a lease with Rite Aid. I just want to bring forward their concern about the property. It was a Rite Aid. It's been for sale for three years with no buyers. This is an appropriate use, given that it's a signalized intersection of two arterial roads. It's exactly where you would expect people to fill up. I know that there are concerns and questions from Canton Road neighbors. I do want to point out that Ms. Brown is going to emphasize that the left-turn movements are somehow a concern about Canton Road. She also, at the Planning Commission, mentioned that she was there with the competitor, which is across Canton Road from this site. So if you deny this, all you're doing is forcing everyone to turn left into the competitor. This is Canton Road South. As you're coming into Marietta for AM work, this is a convenience store that would be a right-in, right-out on your way to work. Exactly why you put them at signalized intersections, because they facilitate right-in, right-out. So actually, if you deny this application, you're forcing people to turn left for gas stations on the opposite side of the road. So if that's the concern, then you should approve it because it allows us other option on this side of the road. Property, this is appropriate use. My client would ask you to approve it as requested by QuickTrip. Thank you.
Thank you. There is about 40 seconds left on the clock for those in support. Is there anyone else here in support of this application? Okay, not seeing any. We'll now hear from opposition, which will have a total of 10 minutes.
For the record, I'm Carol Brown with Canton Road Neighbors. I want to note that we previously had submitted a petition with 141 signers of local residents who feel that this is not the appropriate use for this site. Some of them live off of Canton Road, others do live in the Bells Ferry area, but have children in Cal High School, and they'll be going through this intersection every day. So I'm speaking on behalf of those signers and on behalf of Mr. Patel, who has the small service station across the street, and I believe legally he's contiguous to subject property, if I'm not mistaken, but he is directly across the street. I have a presentation prepared. If you will go ahead and start that, I will let you watch this presentation rather than look at me. Go ahead. QuickTrip wants to open a new gas station at the corner of Canton and Jamerson. This would add to QuickTrip's national total of over 1,031 stores. It would add to Canton Road's existing 11 gas stations, including two just across the street. The 1.6-acre site they planned to use was built for a drugstore in the early 2000s and has 71 parking spaces. QT plans to demolish the existing building and build a new 5,000-square-foot convenience store with a canopy fronting Canton Road with 16 fuel pumps. It is adjacent to three small neighborhood businesses. Projected traffic to the site would be 2,057 visits per day, or a total of 4,114 ins and outs. There are two driveways. One is on Jamerson and is right-in, right-out due to the medians. The other is a small driveway on Canton Road, which would be shared by the three neighborhood businesses and QuickTrip. Both driveways are too close to the signal at the intersection, based on current DOT The Canton Road driveway should be limited to right-in, right-out, to avoid dangerous left-hand exits to the north across southbound traffic. The QuickTrip will agree to this, but in practice, it will be difficult to stop some drivers. They will still have left turns into the Canton Road driveway and right-in, right-out. The attorney for QuickTrip states that the NRC rezoning fits the land use, and convenience store with fuel sales is a permitted use, which is true. He also states that this is an ideal location and will not affect nearby businesses. It may be ideal for QuickTrip, but how well does this site compare in relation to other new, large QuickTrip or racetrack locations in Cobb? This is the newest QuickTrip at the intersection of Canton Road and Sandy Plains. It is on 2.2 acres and has three different access points. Two are from a road running between Sandy Plains and Canton, and the other is a right-in, right-out just east of the signalized intersection. Several old buildings were demolished, and QT is not in close proximity to the buildings of another business. This is the QuickTrip at the intersection of Powder Springs and Sandtown Road. The signalized intersection also goes to Heatherset, a road with a driveway into QuickTrip and beyond, to other businesses. QT also has a right-in, right-out access point on Powder Springs. The site is 1.97 acres, and QT is not in close proximity to other businesses. This is the newest racetrack at 4410 Canton Road, just seven tenths of a mile to the south. It is on a 2.65-acre site at the busy intersection of Canton and Schallford. Initially, because of the busy Canton Road, left southbound turns were restricted, but ultimately did not prevent drivers from attempting left turns across several lanes of traffic. There were numerous accidents at the intersection, some serious, and a lengthy and expensive intersection redesign was undertaken. This racetrack has four possible points of access. Note the medians on Schallford and on Canton Road. The racetrack on the southern end of Canton Road at 2337 also had major intersection improvements that came about in a 2016 rezoning application to expand and create a new main driveway to the signal at Liberty Hill. Racetrack demolished an old gas station adjacent and created an interparcial access road to Westerly Way, giving residents on the west side of Canton their first-ever access to the busy Canton Road at a signalized intersection. The project was completed in February 2020 and was celebrated with a ribbon-cutting ceremony. Having seen these examples of the lot sizes and access points for the new, larger convenience stores with 16 to 20 fuel pumps in Cobb, it is worth taking another look at the current site QuickTrip is considering. The Canton Road driveway will be especially challenging for large vehicles entering and exiting, as well as the projected high volume. There will be a constant stream of vehicles of all sizes entering and exiting the QuickTrip 24/7. This will certainly impact traffic on Canton and Jamerson. The attorney for QuickTrip feels that this is the ideal location. It may be ideal for the corporation in terms of future profits, but it isn't likely to be a win-win outcome for the nearby businesses, for area drivers, or for Mr. Patel, owner of the small Chevron across the road. Mr. Patel started work as a manager in 2005 and was able to buy the station in 2018. Now, the small minority-owned business may be facing competition from a large corporation with 1,031 stores. Hopefully, a less intense use for this site will be found, and hopefully one that will use the existing building. In fairness to the property owner, the land should be given a viable zoning. Therefore, we respectfully ask that this be deleted to NRC for neighborhood retail and professional offices. Prohibited uses to include convenience store with fuel sales, other automotive-related businesses, contractor is a special exception, no outdoor storage or heavy equipment. Use and site plan to come to the Board of Commissioners as other business. Canton Road design guidelines to apply. Access on the Canton Road driveway to be limited to right-in, right-out. Staff comments and recommendations, not otherwise in conflict. We respectfully ask for your favorable consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. Is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this matter? Okay, not seeing any. I will turn things over to our district commissioner.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Originally, there was opposition. You heard today that the adjacent businesses, the restaurant and others in the strip there, have agreed to entering into a shared parking agreement. I don't think it's finalized, but we did hear that today, that they have worked things out for the parking and the shared driveway, the access on Canton. The proximity of Cal High School and pedestrian and vehicle traffic still concerns me at this intersection, and the access on Canton Road, to me, should be restricted to a right-in, right-out with no left in or out, in addition to the proximity to the signalized intersection at Jamerson. Also, I had asked the applicant to reconfigure the site plan to put the pumps on, where you come in on Jamerson, to put the pumps there so that they're not impacting the restaurant and businesses facing Canton, adjoining this piece, and put the building fronting Canton Road, the convenience store. They've said that won't work, but I don't think this should be approved if it isn't worked out. So the traffic is a main concern, especially with Cal High School right down the road on Jamerson, right on the other side of Canton, and a lot of traffic, pedestrian and vehicular. Without any variances, it's hard to deny something that has no variances and is appropriate for the NRC category, zoning category. However, it is an impact to the traffic and businesses surrounding that. You know, it used to be, you'd see a gas station on every corner in a lot of intersections, and that's America, free enterprise. You can't really deny something because there's another use similar or the same across the street or next door, but the traffic still is my main concern. So I'd like to hold this until the February 20th meeting and give the applicant an opportunity to try to reconfigure with the gas pumps closer to the Jamerson side with the building in front to... with the building in front, to be less of an impact to the businesses next door, and also work out the shared driveway agreement with the adjoining landowner, Bellini Construction, the shared parking and driveway access on Canton, and limit that to a right-in, right-out, as well as Jamerson. So, that would be my motion with direction to the applicant, recommendations, and also to encourage and recommend meetings with Canton Road neighbors and the property owners and their representative.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Commissioners.
Okay, next case is rezoning case Z forty-nine of 2023. DG East Cobb Guthrie's LLC requests rezoning from PSC to NRC for a restaurant in the amount of sixty-nine of the first district. The property is located on the south side of Lower Roswell Road, west of Johnson Ferry Road. Is the applicant present? The director said the applicant is here, and earlier, there's two people here opposed.
You may begin whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Again, good morning, Madam Chair and Commissioners. Kevin Moore here on behalf of the applicant, and hopefully, we'll start to get more of the Christmas spirit this morning, move these things through. So, but hopefully, this application is one that will receive your favorable consideration. This is an application for rezoning of this parcel. It's located at Johnson Ferry and Lower Roswell Roads. As you noted, it was on the consent agenda and now not. It's not because myself and Mr. Grom have some, or this applicant and the East Cobb Civic Association have a big disagreement. I believe I understand what he will be saying, what he will be stating to you, and it's a, and I'll cover that, but it's an issue or an item that really is more to highlight what we are proposing and potential impacts that DOT is looking at, and we have. But to give you some history on this parcel, you can see this is zoned PSC, which is Planned Shopping Center. This location, as you might well expect, at the intersection of these two major roadways, Lower Roswell and Johnson Ferry, is within a community activity center. PSC, like GC, is a category that was intended to be phased out as part of the overhaul of the Cobb County zoning ordinance in the, let's call it, early nineties as a reference point, and PSC as a category is a valid viable category and may be used within a community activity center, which this finds itself. So initially, when this, my client, the applicant, investigated the property, received the zoning certification letter and read the ordinance, it appeared that PSC was a viable valid category. At that point in time, they applied, bought the property, submitted their plans for a Guthrie's fast food, quick-service restaurant at this location. Guthrie's, if you're not familiar, is a chicken finger restaurant. It has a limited menu, it's really chicken fingers, fries, Texas toast, coleslaw, it's a limited menu, but it's very popular and can be very successful. But in this instance, what they are proposing is only drive-through. This would not have any inside dine-in or sit-down, given its location and the small size of the building. So that would be a great location for that. They've submitted for their permits. Those permits were reviewed by Cobb County Departments as a permit number as it proceeded through the permit process. In fact, they got almost to the end of the permitting process with nearly all approvals of various departments, including the Johnson Ferry Overlay Guideline District, to make, to ensure that this building met those standards. It worked through that. About that time, earlier this year, was when Cobb County zoning staff realized that due to this particular size of this PSC parcel, because it is undersized for PSC, that in fact, it needed to come back through rezoning, to be rezoned to NRC for the proposed use, and has required that in order to move forward as part of their permitting and finish the permitting. I give you all that context to tell you, this is not a situation where somebody's coming in on a speculative basis. It's not a situation where somebody has come in hoping. This is a situation where the owner really did do their research. Initially, even your Cobb County Department staffs believed they could move forward, but it was determined that they needed to have it rezoned due to the size as a PSC parcel here. You can see, if you take a step back, if you know where this is, the surrounding area is zoned CRC and GC, they share with a, the CRC has got a shared entrance off of Lower Roswell. That's the only entrance for this parcel, is that. There's also an entrance off of Johnson Ferry through the CRC parcel, which is a drugstore pharmacy that can access this piece, but this has right-in, right-out on Lower Roswell and as a restaurant piece. You can see the surrounding area, and no question, from a zoning category standpoint, NRC is appropriate in this community activity center and for this proposed use. Let me turn to the site plan so I can tell you exactly how they're proposing to do that. Turning to the site plan now, here's Lower Roswell. Here is the PSC piece right here in the proposed subject property. The actual building today, that small building, which was like a small, little medical office type of building that's been vacant for a little while, it would be renovated. It's about twenty-one-hundred square feet today in round terms that that building is. It would be renovated and actually reduced in size to just over thirteen-hundred square feet in total size. Again, to remind you what we are proposing, and this applicant is proposing, there will be no dine-in service due to the limitations here. It will only be drive-through, and that also enabled them to create two or a double set of drive-through lanes around the building, which is present as part of our site plan. And that also is what leads to the fact that our traffic study, which has been fully completed and submitted to DOT, does conclude that as a result of the double lanes and the amount of room that is here, it will not impact negatively in terms of queue links out into the shared driveway, and certainly not out into Lower Roswell, but there's plenty of room on-site to provide for that, especially with the processes that this particular applicant has in place for moving people through the line. Again, not having the dine-in service, the entire operation and business is dedicated to drive-through, A. B, they do have a limited menu in terms of what they do, so the timing of coming through as a drive-through-only operation is much more quickly than you have at other locations or other similar types of restaurant, or fast food restaurants, and plus, they have ideally the double lane. Lastly, also wanted to show you, because a lot of effort went into this, thank you, the elevations which have been reviewed and approved by your Cobb County planning staff or development staff, specifically because of this property's location in the Johnson Ferry overlay, it has to go through specific design guidelines and design review by Cobb County staff to ensure it meets with the Johnson Ferry overlay design guidelines. So, this building would be, as I stated, completely renovated, has specialty lighting, both for the property and for the building itself, as well as various brick components and so forth that comply with those very specific standards. Again, we believe certainly the zoning category is entirely appropriate. We believe the use is entirely appropriate. We've had multiple meetings with East Cobb Civic Association. Their concern was one of basically queue impact, that is, having cars out into the shared driveway or impacting Lower Roswell Road. They had requested a full traffic study along with DOT. So, we had done the submittal one, and as well as the full submittal two, which has been provided to DOT. That traffic study did specifically analyze and review the queue length impact and found that there would not be, due to the operation and due to the amount of room that they have on-site, especially by creating the double lanes of drive-through service, that it would not impact, and it concluded that, it would not impact that. I'll let DOT speak for itself, but they have it under review and have likewise seen that conclusion. Beyond that, we do have a stipulation letter that has been submitted, which includes additional stipulations as it relates to what you would consider signage, making sure that our operations during heavier times would include outdoor employees to take orders, to ensure there's a proper system, as well as our agreement to, you know, to accept or agree to all DOT recommendations and comments, especially any that would come forward that maybe even be different from where they are today as a result of our traffic study. Please note, though, DOT has been reviewing and already had reviewed the plans for this development as part of the permitting process when this was, when this property and this owner was in permitting. So, they do have detailed review of that. There is a Lower Roswell Road DOT road improvement project at this loc, it's much bigger than this specific location, but it does impact this location. Our plans have incorporated and been coordinated with that project, and so that has occurred as part of that permitting plans to give us this final site plan. So I just kind of want to go through that, those aspects with you so that you can be assured that from a DOT perspective, that has been accounted for, incorporated into our plans, and we're in agreement, even if those change as it relates to DOT's recommendations, that those will be incorporated. I'm here to answer any questions that you might have. We have representatives from the applicant, which, from our information, has other Guthrie locations, at least six other Guthrie locations, so they're very good at what they do. Please also note, there are a number, over a dozen or more emails that we've received in support that have been provided to your zoning office as part of the record in support of this application. With that, we respectfully request your approval. Thank you.
Thank you. With that, we'll now hear from opposition.
Madam Chair, willing, Commissioners, my name is Richard Grom. I am president of East Cobb Civic Association and one of the ECCA's case managers for Z forty-nine. The applicant requests that the current zoning be changed from PSC to NRC in order to build a drive-through restaurant. The DOT is expending a lot of tax revenue on the DOT Lower Roswell Road project to improve traffic flow and reduce accidents. ECCA received on Thursday at four PM the traffic study completed by the applicant for this property. ECCA would like to know if DOT has had time to analyze this traffic study and advise the Board of Commissioners of the potential impact on the flow of traffic created by Z forty-nine. The DOT comments on, of November twenty-ninth says, "A traffic study submittal one was received and reviewed. The final version of submittal one and submittal two were requested." ECCA recommends that DOT complete this traffic analysis before the Board of Commissioners either approves or denies Z forty-nine. Sorry, pages stuck together. In addition, the revised stipulation letter dated December eleventh, twenty-twenty-three omitted the hours of operation previously submitted to the Planning Commission. ECCA would like to know why the hours of operation have been omitted. Thank you.
Thank you, Richard. There are eight minutes left on the clock for anyone else here in opposition. Okay, not seeing anyone else, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, and certainly DOT was called, so if you can come and join us, answer just where we are with this traffic queuing study, or traffic and queuing study.
Good morning, Leah Florham, DOT. So yes, we did receive the submittal two, and we have had a chance to review briefly within the couple of days that we have had it, and we agree with their findings that it appears that the sites are going to, the driveways are going to be performing at an acceptable level, even in the future conditions, according to the site plan. I think one of the main concerns that was brought up was the queuing within the development. They claim that their queue and the double queueing is going to have two-hundred-and-fifty-six feet of available space for them to queue, and then that will allow about, I don't know, eighteen cars or something like that, and that would be acceptable and will be all within their development, not spilling onto the shared driveway or to Lower Roswell Road. Another comment that we had made that was pending was the right-of-way donation on Lower Roswell Road, fifty-five feet from the central line, and I believe the applicant is agreeable to that, because that will be for the project that we have ongoing on Lower Roswell Road.
Thank you.
Yes.
Are there other questions?
Okay.
All right. Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Kevin, would the applicant please approach? So one of the questions brought up was around the hours of operation.
Yes, they have general hours of operation. You know, they're open for lunch and dinner menus now, so in terms of hours of operation, it would be more, you know, when do people get there, begin preparation, and those types of things? So, you typically don't have hours of operation. We can certainly say it's not a twenty-four-hour operation, but if we want to, if you're asking me, what can I propose, if that's what the question is for in terms of hours of operation, you know, we could, this will include, you know, prep time as well as, say, shutdown or close time, not simply serving time. It would be something like six AM to ten or eleven PM. Just because we got to be able to, when you say hours of operation, for example, if code enforcement comes by and the lights are on and somebody's in there, then they're going to consider that operating. So that's what I'm trying to capture. I'm not trying to, it's not a, they're not sitting there with people lined up for all those hours.
Okay, and then, and I think part of the question was, there had been an initial submission of hours of operation, and then it got removed?
Yes, it was part of the information that had been provided, but we also looked at that and said, that's too specific because of what I just mentioned. We don't want to be caught in a situation, and so that's why it was omitted, is what I understand.
Okay, and then the right-of-way donation?
Yeah, that's already included.
Okay. Just wanted to confirm. Other questions? Go ahead.
I have a question, a couple of questions. Kevin, do you know what the current impervious surface is at the site?
I do. The current, I'm going to give you the round numbers. I can give you the exact, the current impervious as existing is ninety-five percent, and it's actually being reduced to ninety-two percent, right? But that's an existing condition. If you'll note on the right-hand side, let me, because I know that sounds like, wow, okay? But if you notice on the right-hand side, all that green area, that's owned by Cobb County, it's actually designated as a park. I know, I never, I never knew it was there either, but that's actually a county park area that's, and parcel that's owned by the county. When this was originally developed, it was developed as a planned shopping center back, let's call it, in the seventies, when it was originally done, and so then it was kind of broken up over the years, and this is the PSC piece that's remaining. See, the others are like CRC and so forth, as they were redeveloped over the years. So that's how you ended up with a parcel that's as currently is ninety-five percent, but it's being reduced for us. We're adding, we're improving that.
Right, okay.
That's why it's listed that way.
Okay.
Which included acquisition of that park area, so if you, over the years, that occurred as well.
Okay. Is the parking pa, I'm sorry, the pad for the dumpster, is that reflected on this image?
It is. Let me, if you, if you'd like, I'm happy to point that out.
Yes, please. Yes, please.
All right, on the screen, this is the dumpster pad and location right here.
Okay.
Okay.
All right, thanks, that's all I have.
Sure, thank you for your questions.
Commissioner Burrow.
So you're not expanding the footprint of what's there now?
We're actually reducing.
You're just remodeling inside?
Right, because we're remodeling inside as well as the exterior of the building. We'll be reducing the footprint of the building that's there.
Okay, and you're drive-through only, no seating inside, but will they be able to come inside to order?
No, there is, there's no dine-in, so you can't come in to order. There is a walk-up, we have a protected pedestrian that you can walk up if you wanted to, and that's really for, say, somebody who works in the CVS next door who wants to come over and walk up and order, but you don't go inside.
Or they can come in and park and go up through the window instead of driving.
You could, yeah, there's ample, there's ample parking for that, that's correct, if you wanted to.
Yeah, I see the concern of stacking availability to infringe on the pharmacy, but...
Right, and we readily acknowledge that concern, which is why they took certain steps to mitigate that, which includes the double drive-through line, which includes only having no dine-in service, as well as making sure our traffic study covered that and addressed that to DOT satisfaction. So that's how we address that.
I do now have another question for you, and kind of contemplating the question of hours of operation, I will ask ECCA to come up and see if this is something agreeable, but instead of saying hours of operation, can we say drive-through hours of operation, specifically for the drive-through itself to be?
I mean, we can, I mean, I just...
That way you're not infringing on the setup or prep, like the prep time or the closing time?
I mean, I, we can, I, I'm just a little concerned about when we're placing that kind of level of hours of operation restriction on this one, and you've got McDonald's that's 24/7 on the other side of Johnson Ferry on Lower Roswell. I just, I have a, just a, in the nature of just economics and competitive economics while the government steps in and says, "This one has to be treated differently than that one," from a business point. I get it from an operations and just an impact standpoint, but that, dicing it that closely, it starts to bother me.
And I will ask for a little bit more clarification from ECCA on that, but I know that a lot of businesses in the area are closed at a certain time. There are some that are open, but most are closed at, like, because I struggle to find something to eat after four meetings.
We just need to be open morning through, we just need to be open morning through and evening, you know, because this is, that's when people are going to come through and eat, so that's, that's how I'd like to, that's...
Okay. Did, did anyone have any other questions for the applicant? Thank you.
Sure, thank you for your questions.
Richard, if you can approach ECCA.
Okay, just, I wanted to understand some clarity for the hours of operation question. Was that a point of concern, or was that, was there a recommendation?
One of the things we went over with when we met with Mr. Moore was, laundry list of, of questions was, what were the hours of operation going to be? And the first stipulation letter that was put in on November 27th stated the hours of operation as being from 10:00 AM to 9:30 PM. When we got the second stipulation letter, and I must admit, I didn't see the second stipulation letter until last night, and reviewing that and comparing it to the first, all of a sudden, that was gone. And so we were wondering what happened, why all of a sudden, when this is originally before the Planning Commission, it said nine, 10 to 9:30, when we had talked, it said 10 to 9:30, and now I've got a stipulation letter to December 11th that doesn't have it at all.
Right.
And so we just wondered why it's not there.
Based upon the answer, it was intentionally removed in considering the prep and closing time, so the question that I have for ECCA is, was the hours...
That's simply a matter of wording, isn't it?
Understood, and so my question for ECCA is, is that question about hours of operation, is it more, is there a concern tied to the operating hours, or just a question on why it was removed?
It's, it's more a concern of why, why it's not there now, and why we don't know what the operating hours are going to be. I mean, our big concern was, you know, is this thing going to be open until 12 o'clock at night? Is it going to be open until 1:00 in the morning? Is it going to be closed at 9:30? I mean, at this point, I think we should know.
Right, so is there a desire to not have it operate, is what I'm asking? Or are you just saying, we don't know what it is?
No, we just like to know when it's going to operate.
Got it, okay, thank you. Thank you.
Okay, and I'd just like to weigh in on the hours of operation here. I understand we do restrict some restaurants based on hours of operation, but it depends on what's around them, and if we carefully look at where this is situated, it's all commercial. So it's not that we need to protect a neighborhood by limiting the hours of operation, so I can understand why Mr. Moore removed that from the stipulation letter, but I don't see that being an issue for this site.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, sure.
There was a mention of restaurants in the area. Do we know the hours of operation for those restaurants? I think there was a mention of a McDonald's.
Yeah, yeah.
What are the 24 hours?
They're 24 hours, and, yeah, and then the, what was Longhorns, and, sorry, I think, I want to make sure I'm...
Oh, and I took a look at that, commissioners, and the Zaxby's, which is Catty Corner, is open from 10:30 AM to 10:00 PM. There's a Waffle House, a couple parcels down, it's open 24 hours a day, and then the McDonald's, looks like it has extended hours. I think Mr. Moore just misspoke on that, but McDonald's is open from 5:30 AM to 11:00 PM. So there's a, a bunch of different hours out here.
Okay.
Yeah, I think this one is going to be hard to confine, to restrict to certain hours. So, and certainly did receive answers from the traffic study and the queuing study. I don't have any further questions. Are there any other questions from the other commissioners? All right, I will motion to approve Z49, as read earlier with the case, in addition to the staff comments.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
And the most recent stipulation, stipulation letter from yesterday.
That's the one dated December 11th.
December 11th.
Thank you.
I'll second the motion.
Thank you. Is there further discussion on this matter? All right, call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, commissioners.
Okay, next case is LEP 29, James A. Frank, requests a temporary land use permit for firearm manufacturing in Land Lot 291 of the 18th District. Property is located on the east side of Queen Mill Road, north of Mapleton Parkway. Is the applicant present? Is the applicant here for LEP 29, James A. Frank? Is there anyone here opposed at LEP 29? Three, okay. Madam Chair and Board, there's three people opposed, the applicant is not present, so it's, you know, and the Planning Commission did recommend this be denied, staff did recommend it be denied, so the board...
Okay, then that could have had something to do with whether or not the applicant would show up today, so I'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Certainly. John, can we attempt to call the applicant and find out where he is? I would like to hear from opposition, they pretty much sat at the hearing all morning. I'm not sure if that's protocol, if we can just move forward, or just...
If we wait for the applicant, maybe the applicant may appear and we can at least hear it.
Okay.
And that would give opportunity to hear from the applicant and opposition.
As we're giving a call.
Yeah, give him a call, and I guess maybe we can move on to OB 60.
Okay. Okay, moving into other business items on today's agenda, first item we're going to hear is other business item number 60 of 2023, which is to consider amending the site plan and stipulations for Inokapiya regarding rezoning applications, Z55 of 2014. Property is located on the west side of Powell Drive, south of Sidney and Boulevard, in Land Lot 34 of the 18th District. Is the applicant present? Let's record, so the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 60? At three, okay, let's record, so there's three people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
Thank you. John, did I miss how we dispositioned other business item 52?
That was withdrawn.
Withdrawn, okay. Oh my God, this is...
Come up for me.
Good morning. You can introduce yourself and then begin your case.
All right. My name is Inokapiya, I am the owner of the property. I started this business 2009, pretty much I was buying wrecked cars from insurance companies and fixing them while doing that I had a fair share of citations and fines paid. But as the years moved by, we've been able to change the face of the business, and currently we're selling brand-new auto parts. Currently, the warehouse that we have over there, the size is so small for us to do any meaningful business and be able to properly store our brand-new auto parts and accessories, we require that we put up a storage facility to be able to accommodate what we have. We are not asking for a rezoning, we asking that we have a permit to be able to construct the storage facility. With this current business, it's going to reduce traffic because most of our wares are going to be sold online, so most of the parts will be shipped out, and that is what we intend, and that is what we seeking permit for. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here who would like to speak for this application? There are eight minutes left on the clock. Yes, sir. If you have not been sworn in, please do get sworn in, and then we'll have your approach.
My name is Valentine Ebune, and I've been doing business with Mr. Apia and people around that place, and I've seen that business grow a little in bits. He's had a fair share of his own code enforcement regulations and stuff, however, as the business improves and he moves the business into doing brand-new auto parts, needs some space, so it's more like building a little warehouse to be able to store and accommodate the new business. And with that, he's going to create a whole lot of clean environment in that place with the new facility. The fact that the business is going to be online, all parts will be shipped, picked up, traffic will be reduced, cleanliness in that place, controlled environment and all that, I think, and I know, it will be very prevalent in that place to accommodate and benefit everybody. So I ask that you approve the application for cleanliness, for environmental protection, and good business. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, anyone else? There's a balance of about 6 minutes and 45 seconds on the clock. All right, not seeing anyone else for support, we will now hear from those in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm with Mableton Improvement Coalition, I co-chair the zoning committee. As far as the application before us is concerned, there's a lot of missing information. The site plan, which is, which you can see on the screen, and I know you've seen in your packets and, and materials, does not show the location of, of the new building. There's no dimensions for the new building, there's no indication as to where the parking and, and driveways will be for delivery trucks or for any, for any customers or employees, and there are no renderings or elevations. The use of this, of this new building, as we know now, is for the, the storage of, of new auto parts, but auto part sales are not an approved use for this property. When this property was zoned in 2014, there were only four uses allowed. One of them was for light auto repair, which was the business that seemed most likely to, to be, to be appropriate for this property then. So if, if the change of business is, is certain to, to the sale of auto parts, then that's something that needs to be considered separately here. The current use of this property seems to be an auto salvage yard. That was the business in place in 2014 when there was an application for heavy industrial and a, and a special land use permit. This board deleted that request to neighborhood retail commercial without a special land use permit, but the auto salvage business has continued, apparently, until now, based on what we see in the code enforcement records. Current code enforcement complaint has been open since 2017, and as of just a few days ago, there was an inspection, and the property is still out of compliance. Also, with some searches on the internet, it appears that this property is the location of Maxi Auto Brokers. As you know, used car sales require a special land use permit, and to our knowledge, there is no special land use permit for auto sales at this location. The, the record on zoning compliance here, I think, needs to be taken into consideration since an additional request is being made for a new type of business here. As I mentioned, there were four approved uses for this property in 2014. Auto salvage and auto sales, auto salvage continues, auto sales seems to have been added, used auto sales. There was to be a parking plan, and vehicles were to be parked on hardened surfaces in striped spaces. That does not appear to have happened. There was to be no parking on the right-of-way, but as you'll see, when the Google Street View photography truck went by, there was a car parked right there next to the no parking sign. There was to be a landscape plan and implementation of that plan within 90 days. There does not seem, that certainly does not seem to have happened, and there was to be no outside storage or display, which you can see from the GIS map, also does not seem to have taken place. So therefore, we would ask that you deny this application. If the applicant does have a new business plan and a, a clear path forward, then we ask that before that be considered, that the property come into compliance. We would, we would strongly urge you not to approve something based upon compliance in the future, even with specific deadlines, since those deadlines have not been met in the past. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else desiring to speak in opposition to this matter? There's a balance of about 6 minutes left. Okay, not seeing anyone, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner. Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chair. Before I call up the applicant, I'd like to call up you Lisa with code enforcement and just talk to us a little bit about this site. It has been the subject of code enforcement violations for the greater part of a decade now, with the most recent violations observed on December 14th, I believe. If you can just kind of walk through some of the violations.
Good morning. You're Lisa Fosson, Cobb County Code Enforcement. The property has been in violation since 2013 and has not come into compliance since. There is no effort whatsoever to come into compliance. There's incidental storage, there's parking standards issue, non-compliance vehicles, trash. They're doing auto storage and auto salvage. You know, none of the zoning stipulations from 2014 have been met. Also, when we come to inspect, 99% of the time, we're unable to inspect the property because the property owner is very uncooperative. He will not allow the officer onto the property to inspect the property. Luckily, last week, the officer was able to get on quickly and get pictures before being denied access. And, you know, the simplest things have not been done. The storage items that are out there between the car parts and everything and the trash that could have been removed, we're not getting compliance at all. And I do have just a few brief pictures to show of the violations at the property. Also, doing auto repairs outside of the garage or bays are not allowed. There are employees actively working on vehicles outside of the bays or garage. So, in this photo, you can see that there's an employee working on a junk vehicle in the back. And then there's also items stored all around the property, which is not allowed. According to the 2014 zoning stipulations, it states that there is no outside display or storage allowed. Here's a close-up of items outside. And then also, it shows in all the photos that there was some type of parking plan that was supposed to be approved by the district commissioner. And the vehicles are to be parked on a hardened treated surface and that has not been done as well. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe there was a recent court date for the applicant. And reading through the code enforcement summary, there's been several court dates dating back to 2017. But can you share with us the judge's finding or the ruling? With the most recent, I believe was in October.
The owner's been cited 10 times throughout from 2013 up to currently for ongoing violations. And it's been the same issues that was listed in the zoning stipulations in the violations at the property.
Okay. And there was a court date in October. Would you happen to know the update or the judge's ruling?
Yes, ma'am. So, on October 27th, the citations for auto storage, auto salvage and non-compliance vehicle with no process, but $200 fine was paid for penalties.
Okay, a $200 fine.
For penalties, which was the zoning stipulations from 2014.
Okay. So, right now, there is not a pending court case from code enforcement?
No, ma'am.
With this applicant? Okay, all right, thank you. That's all I have for you, Lisa. If you guys have any? No? Okay, I'd like for Mr. Apia to approach, please.
Yes, Your Honor.
Hello. What is the current business model of your business? I heard testimony that it's now being used as a used car lot as well. If you can just share a little information with us about that, as well as your current business model, which does not seem to align with the stipulations of 2014. So, just please share what your current business model is, please.
Okay. Like I said earlier, we buy cars from the insurance companies, fix them and sell them. That is what we've been doing currently. Apart from the new business of incorporating the brand-new auto parts and accessories that we're selling.
Okay, and what about the used car lot?
Yes, that is in front. When we, the cars that we fix, those are what we sell. Those that we buy from the insurance and restore them, that is what is in front of the building.
Okay. So, you have space that's dedicated for used car sales without approval of the board? Did you submit an application? Do you have a license? John, I'm not sure what he would need to do at this point. But under the zoning stipulations of 2014, that use is not allowed.
2014, we did apply for special land use permit, which was denied.
Right, for used car sales, correct?
No.
Oh, for the auto salvage, right.
For special land use permit. That was what was denied. But we went to Cobb County. Our auto broker license has always been 5780 Power Drive. We're given license to operate as auto broker, yes.
Okay, and I'm sorry, I think I missed that. Where did you obtain that, that auto broker's license?
2014, Your Honor.
2014, but with an auto broker's license, that doesn't necessarily mean that you can sell used cars here as well. Is there a difference? Because you can have a broker's license and be an auto broker without having vehicles at the location.
Our vehicles are not sold at the location. But when we auto broker, when we buy cars for customers, it first comes to our premises before it's sent out.
Okay. And in your estimation of the zoning stipulations in 2014, which was restricted to light auto use, do you believe that this is in violation of that?
Yes, Your Honor, it was in violation. And that is what we've always tried to move out.
Okay.
There've been an accusation that we do not even allow officers to come. There hasn't been a single time that an officer came and we refuse officer for entering premises.
Okay, thank you. So, you are admitting that you are in violation of the 2014 zoning stipulations?
Yes.
Okay, you are admitting that, okay. Does your, and I know that you mentioned that you receive vehicles from insurance companies. So, is it reasonable to conclude that you have those vehicles towed to your property?
Yes.
Okay, so they are towed to your property?
Yes.
And on average, how many vehicles do you have towed on your property per day? Or per week?
I would say on weekly basis. And there are weeks that we may have like six, seven cars coming to the...
Six to seven cars or six to seven trips? Cars? Okay. The building, the application is to consider approval of a building for your new car parts that you plan to sell, which I believe also does not align with the stipulations of 2014. But can you share with us some of the details of the proposed building? And, you know, and just looking at what's on the screen here, I'm not sure where you're planning to place that. If we can just get that site plan up, yeah? And if he can, if you can let him use, allow him to use a pointer to show us the plan for the additional building. Okay. Is that the proposed location where the cursor's circling?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and what can you tell us about the building?
Okay, it's going to be a steel building, a steel building, which will be pre-engineered. And we've had a proposal, I've submitted the proposal to the zoning. It's going to be 70 by 70. I think 70 by 70, yeah.
Are you saying 77 zero?
Seven zero, yes.
By seven zero?
Yes.
Are you, is the plan to also repair vehicles?
No, ma'am, just for storage of the brand-new parts, to be able to ship out.
Okay. The location here, your business, as you are very well aware, has been the subject of code enforcement violations since 2014, 2017. Is there a reason why you have not complied with the zoning conditions? Or is there a reason why you continue to be in violation of those conditions?
Okay. With those conditions, usually, there have been several occasions that an officer come, I have to sit them in my office so they explain to me exactly what needs to be done. Most of the time, they said, I have too many cars. Two, they ask that I do not store anything outside. And most of the time, when they come, I do clean up and I have pictures to show. And that is why on my last court hearing, they told me, okay, you are now, the place is looking clean. And the officer also attested to the fact that the place is clean. And they asked me to go pay a fine of $200 and that was it.
Okay. The concern that I have is it sounds like you're willing to come into compliance once you're forced to. You mentioned that when the code enforcement officers stop by and cite you, then you'll clean up the place. But the concern that I have is that you shouldn't be forced to, A, clean your place. I heard the word cleanliness used earlier by person in support. But you shouldn't be forced to clean your business. Neither should you be forced to come into compliance with the stipulation. In 2014, the board found a way to allow you to have your business here. So, they found something that would work, a solution that would work. But apparently, from what I can see here, it appears that the business that you're conducting today in terms of the auto salvage, et cetera, is the same model business, with the exception of now the used car sales, that you were operating in 2013, which brought you before the board in 2014. So, I just need for you, you know, to share with us that what you're doing today is exactly what you were doing in 2013. Because it doesn't appear that anything has changed from 2014. And I'm trying to understand why it has not, outside of concluding that this is a complete disregard to the community and to the Board of Commissioners.
Thank you, ma'am. 2013, we had a lot of those wrecked cars in front of the building. Currently, there is no wrecked car in front of the building. Every car in the building currently is a car that have been purchased for our customers, awaiting delivery. In the back, that was where we keeping some of the wrecked cars. Currently, you're not going to find more than three cars wrecked in the back. Everything, as I speak to you now, the few that were in, we have a container over there. Everything has been moved in now. It's, we started doing that on Saturday. So, everything has been moved out of that space. What we intend doing now, or we doing the brand-new parts, is not going to have any wrecked cars. And also, I've also been accused of keeping cars right in front of no parking sign. That is on the street and I have no control of that. When people, we've called police several times. Hey, we have a gentleman that has parked a car here for more than 24 hours. They tell you, since it has a valid tag, there is nothing they can do about it.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have any questions, ma'am?
I do, Commissioner. I moved into the hearing and I would like to ask staff for their recommendation on this.
Okay.
Madam Chair and Board, the staff would recommend the board deny the request.
Thank you. Okay. That's it? Does anybody have any questions for the applicant?
Just for you, Commissioner, and you've already made this clear, as well as the Mableton Improvement Coalition. In 2014, you were zoned to light automotive repair. And it does not seem as if you've operated consistent with that. And light automotive repair doesn't mean removing wrecker trucks. There's an entire definition associated with what's allowed, as well as a code section that articulates how you are to comply with light automotive repair. And nothing that you said today or what we've seen exhibited in pictures indicates that you've operated that way. And even from listening to you, it's not that you didn't operate that way. You never intended to. And that's what's bothersome to me, that now you're asking for us to allow you to do something else, which, yes, would be cleaner and more amenable to the community. But you've just shown no desire or interest in accommodating that with the prior zoning for several years now, since 2014, almost a decade later. And so, Commissioner, I'm in support of staff's recommendation.
All right, thank you. You may proceed. You know, I had a bunch of comments for, to read. But, you know, I think that we've heard enough regarding the condition of the site and the willingness or the lack thereof of the applicant in bringing the property into compliance. But I will share with the applicant that I cannot begin to contemplate approval of this request, considering your blatant disregard of the 2014 conditions and your decade-old infractions. If however, if however, there is any glimmer or any hope of any type of consideration for me, from me, I strongly, strongly encourage you to meet the conditions of 2014, clean up your property, and follow the zoning laws as it relates to the used car lot, which this is not a permitted use. So, you would still have to come back before the board with an application for consideration. And with that, I make a motion. I also support staff's recommendation. And I make a motion to deny OB 60, 2023. And I would also like to add a clerk's note that code enforcement will resume the issuance of violations and citations since the case is no longer in court. And those violations are to include any other infractions or violations at the site, including the used car lot. And Mr. Apia, it is my hope that you will bring your property into compliance, that you will show consideration to your neighbors. Because your neighbors are the ones that are driving by this every day, looking at the condition of this property. I'm not sure where you reside in relation to this site, but have some consideration for the community, please. Thank you.
Okay, so I perceive that's a motion, Commissioner. And then we'll look for a second.
Second.
Is there any further discussion on this matter? Call the question. The motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Commissioners. John, can you clarify how many more other business matters we have on today's agenda?
I believe we have four more matters. And we did hear from the applicant for LUP 29, James A. Frank. And, oh, there's five, five... We're going to hear that one. So, there's five more items to hear on other business. We did hear from the applicant for LUP 29. We did hear from the applicant for LUP-29, and they are not going to be coming in, and they're going to accept whatever the board does to the property.
Okay.
So if you're with the board, I'm going to reread that into the record, and we can call the opposition if you like.
Yeah. I'd like to disposition that, and then just be mindful, Commissioners, we are approaching lunchtime. And this other business matter that we had took about at least 15 minutes, so we may be here until 1:00. If you'd like for us to power through to lunch? Commissioner Richards, if you could.
I do need a recess at some point before 67.
Okay. And I see that as our last matter, unless the other matter would be heard. Okay. So there's a request for us to recess before 67. Are there any other requests for a break? Commissioner?
If we could take a five-minute break, I believe OB-56 we have an agreement on. So that way, we could add that back to consent.
Okay, would you be amenable to doing that while we recess before other business item 67?
Yes.
Okay. Very good. So, Commissioners, also, I know we're going to need just a general five-minute biological break before we go through the rest of these cases. Why don't we hear LUP-29, if you're okay with that? And then we'll take a brief five-minute break, come back, and then we'll take a brief break prior to other business item 67.
Okay. All right. LEP-29, James A. Frank, requests a temporary land use permit for firearm manufacturing in land lot 291 of the 18th District. The property is located on the east side of Queen Mill Road, north of Maven Parkway. The applicant is not present, there are three people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward to be sworn in.
I did a lot of research on this one. I did a lot of research on this one. Good morning. My name is Robin Meyer, and I'm the co-chair of the zoning committee for the Mabelton Improvement Coalition. We would ask that you deny this application for a land use permit for firearms manufacturing on Queen Mill Road. It's our understanding that Mr. Frank is pursuing this because he also is pursuing a federal firearms license, number seven, from the Bureau of Alcohol, Firearms and Tobacco. I think they have a newer name these days, but I've heard that too long to keep up with the new name. This new license would allow modification of firearms in his application. And at the planning commission, Mr. Frank indicated a rather limited plan for that business. However, once this, once, if this land use permit were to be, were to be approved, there's really not any way for the community or you all to know the extent of the business that he actually undertakes. This property joins the Kingsbridge subdivision, it's surrounded by single-family homes. And with, with the establishment of this business here in this residential area, it becomes, even without signage, it becomes visible online. Any business license will be, will be associated with this address, the zoning application is associated with this address. And consequently, we are concerned that the property becomes a little bit more vulnerable and a little bit more attractive to folks who might want to burglarize guns, which is, and becomes a target that will increase crime in our otherwise pretty peaceful neighborhood. So we would ask that you, that you deny this application. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll now hear from others in opposition.
My name is Brenda Nash, and I also live on Queen's Mill Road, very close proximity to this location. And as Robin had indicated, it appears that he's recently, the applicant has recently filed for an LLC in September of this year, which leads me to believe that he is taking this from a hobby to a business. And with that, he also has stated in his planning commission hearing, that I, the way I understood it, that in addition, he has been selling a couple of guns on Gun Broker website. But he now plans to go begin selling at gun shows as well, which leads me to believe that this is a, turning into a business venture versus just a hobby, which has been portrayed in the past on social media anyway, that that was what he was doing, was just a hobby of his, that he needed a lot. But as for a hobby, most people don't need a FFL-7 permit, which would, as we have talked about, would not only further allow him to sell guns, but to manufacture guns. Is that his intent? Nobody knows. He doesn't, he says he doesn't do it today, but he has also indicated that as he looks to see where sales are generated, that's what, that was my understanding of his testimony at the planning commission, that he looks to see where his sales are coming from. And so I could see that if he started getting sales from this manufacturing of guns, whether it be adding on a trigger or altering the gun in any way, that that could lead to possibly manufacturing a gun. A really, and that more guns at the location would lead to more crime. He has indicated that his fencing is adequate to prevent that. And the picture that was on the zoning application, it shows the fence that runs along the front of the property. Appears to me it'd be about a four-foot fence with just some barbed wire, not barbed wire, but wiring behind to keep an animal inside the gate. It would not keep someone from climbing over the gate. It very, I could see a child could easily, a teenager could easily scale that fence and get into the property. This morning, it's something I've never even noticed before, but I made a picture of a sign, and I can show it to you. It's got gunshots on it on the front of his property, and it says, "No warning, no trespassers. Violators will be shot. Survivors will be shot again." This is not the neighborhood scene that we want in our neighborhood. This is not the feel for a property sitting among nice residential area. The county has just installed sidewalks where people, residents can walk up and down the street and feel safe. And I wouldn't feel safe walking past that zone. And it's, and it's got signs that also says that, warn, notice, you know, that you're being video surveillance, 24-hour video surveillance, which I'm sure with that operation, he needs that. But is he there 24 hours to monitor the video, to see that nobody's coming in and out of there? If it's a residence, you're probably not there 24/7. A business, you could probably put the proper fencing in place to prevent anybody coming on the premises. But it's just not equipped for the, the location is just not satisfactory for the manufacturing and selling of firearms in a residential area. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Okay, is there anyone else here in opposition? Okay, seeing none, I'll turn things over to you, Commissioner.
Thank you, Chair.
Excuse me. Can we hear from zoning staff regarding the applicant's not appearance first, just for the record?
Oh, thank you. Bill.
Hi, Jeanne Payton, Cobb County Zoning. I did contact Mr. Frank just now and explained to him that this is the final decision for his case. He said he would accept the decision that the board made and that he was unable to attend.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. You can go ahead.
I had an opportunity to watch the PC hearing for this case, and the applicant testified that, that it is a business, and his intent is, once the business grows, then he would change location. And I just wanted a little clarification from him, because the application indicates that it was a hobby. So I just needed some clarification there. But just based on his testimony and some of the other research that I've done, I'm just going to conclude that it is, in fact, a business and not a hobby. I researched this case a little in-depth last night, and I learned some very interesting information regarding the firearm license that I'd like to share with you guys. So the home-based business of FFL, which is firearm, what is the acronym? Federal Firearms License, is the most popular in the country, and there are 11 different categories. The category that the applicant is seeking is the second-most common type of FFL, because it allows the manufacturing of firearms with the intent to sell. The applicant's testimony at the PC hearing, he indicate that he currently sells firearms, and he plans to continue to sell firearms, I believe it was on gunstock.com. But what's also interesting is that, is that it allows for the manufacturing of ammunition. One of the items that really kind of stuck out to me regarding this seven FFL license is that the licensee does not need advanced approval to manufacture a suppressor, a machine gun, a short-barrel rifle, or a silencer. And a silencer is legally considered to be a firearm, which means that he is allowed to manufacture that product at this address. With respect to manufacturing the suppressor, machine gun, et cetera, the licensee is only required to submit an ATF form, alcohol, tobacco, and firearm form, within 24 hours of manufacturing the firearm. So in other words, he doesn't need advanced approval to manufacture a silencer or a machine gun. I share similar concerns that have been voiced already. I, I agree with the staff's LUP analysis, particularly as it relates to safety, health, and welfare, as well as the moral concerns involving the surrounding neighborhood, as well as the potential effect on property values. Although the subject parcel is not in a platted subdivision, it is adjacent to one and adjoins to the backyard of six single-family residences. I believe that this use would be better suited in a non-residential area, and I support staff's and the planning commission recommendation of denial. And I am prepared to make my motion. And I make a motion to deny LUP-29, 2023.
End discussion.
Yep.
Please.
I had a very similar case to this several years ago. And it was in a platted subdivision and at a bus stop in front of the house that wanted to go from hobby to selling in a neighborhood. So I agree with the denial, it is not appropriate in residential areas near, that close to the subdivision. And the recommendation was made for them to look for, you know, office space or storefront to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other comments? All right, call the question. The motion carries five-zero. Thank you, Commissioners. Commissioners, please, let's go ahead and take a five-minute break. We can come back at about 12:06. We'll hear the next four cases, and then we'll take a break before hearing other business item 67. Maybe a 15-minute break, Commissioner, if that would be... Twenty? Okay, we'll take a 30-minute break? Twenty is good? And then that should give you enough time, Commissioner Gambrell, to address your matter. All right, see everybody here? Let's just make it 12:07.
Hello and welcome back to our Board of Commissioners zoning hearing. We are now resuming our other business item cases. John, you can help us get started up on our next matter.
Okay, next case is other business item number 61 of 2023, which is to consider a stipulation amendment or stipulation amendments for Leopard Pine Straw regarding rezoning application Z57 of 1997 for property located on the southwesterly side of Veterans Memorial Highway, north of Hickory Trail, and landlot 69 of the 18th District. Is the applicant present? Let the director show the applicant is here. Is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 61? Two. Let the director show there's two people opposed. All those who wish to address the board, please come forward and be sworn in.
It's no longer morning, so it's good afternoon, commissioners.
Hi, ma'am. If you can help us, ma'am, excuse me. I didn't even know you began. If you can help pull the mic down so we can hear you're speaking to it, and state your name for the record, and then you can begin.
I am Josely Martinez, representing Leopard Pine Straw. Good morning, commissioners. No longer morning, it's good afternoon. Leopard Pine Straw is going to be a landscaping and design company. Our purpose is to be allowed to sell pine straw to our local community to strive to make our local homes and businesses look outstanding. With a nearby company like Leopard Pine Straw, to make our local community outdoors look extravagant will be perfect. We anticipate on having three to four trailers outside to store pine straw and pine straw to not be visible. The three or four trailers will be parked on the rear side of the building. I apologize. Here too is an exhibit A is an image of where the trailers are going to be placed. The trailers are going to be placed in a paved area on the rear side of the building. Here too, as B, is an image of where the paved area is located in the side of the building. Right here is going to be the area where the trailers are going to be parked. Here is another image of where the trailers are going to be parked, and there is paved area around there. I do request an approval for my company to be open at this location.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate it. Is there anyone else to speak in support of this application? Okay, is there anyone else here to speak in opposition to this application? You'll have a maximum of 10 minutes.
Good morning. Or, yes, it is afternoon now. My name is Robin Meyer, and I co-chair the zoning committee for the Mableton Improvement Coalition. We appreciate very much the applicant's desire to open a new business and wish her the best of success in that, but we cannot support this location for that business. The image that I'm showing you on the screen is one that we received from the applicant showing where the pine straw trailers were to be parked. I certainly, you know, give way to her map today as to where they will be parked. I think they will, however, be visible from Veterans Memorial Highway. And we are further concerned that access to the pine straw, that landscape companies coming to pick up their pine straw with trucks and trailers will further block, will block the access to the rear of this warehouse building, to the other tenants there. It's a, it is a multi-tenant property now, so this would simply be adding more trucks and traffic to that, to that area, which we believe would be pretty congested, especially in the morning when businesses are opening and employees are arriving. A tremendous issue for us on this case has to do with the non-compliance of this property with previous zoning stipulations. This property was rezoned, I'm sorry, had another business agenda item in 2018 to allow an additional business at this location, which was not previously allowed. And those, virtually all of those conditions have not been met. Among them are that there's to be no outside storage or display of merchandise. The silk flower business almost always has silk flowers and shopping carts outside the front door. The vines and other vegetation were to be removed and kept removed from the building. You can see from this photo that that's not the case. The detention facility was to be inspected and by a professional engineer and brought up to appropriate operating standards. By looking at Google Maps and GIS maps, it does not seem that anything has changed with that detention pond in the last five or six years. There was to be a landscape plan and implementation of that plan within a set timeframe. That too has not happened. There was to be new fencing installed that was compliant with the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines. That has not been implemented. And also, the individual business signs were to be removed from the building, and all of those signs incorporated in a freestanding monument sign that meets the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines. There has been a new sign built. It's in disrepair, and I am really not able to say that it does or doesn't meet the design guidelines. So in summary, we would ask that you deny this application. We do not think that it meets the spirit of the Veterans Memorial Design Guidelines to have the open end of tractor-trailers dispensing pine straw. We, you know, certainly, certainly understand the desire of this business to locate in our community, and we hope that they will find an appropriate location in an area that is appropriate for that kind of use, and with a landlord who is in compliance with the zoning stipulations to which he's previously agreed. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else here in opposition? Okay, not seeing or hearing anyone. John, can you give us staff's recommendation?
Madam Chair, the staff would recommend that the Board of Commissioners deny other business item number 61.
Okay. Thank you. We'll turn things over to the district commissioner.
Thank you, Chair. Is Mr. Penu here? I know that the applicant is here, but is the title owner or the owner of the property here? No? Okay. I just wanted to follow up with him regarding some questions with respect to the conditions that have not been met in 2018. Based on where the trailers will be located, the description from the applicant said rear, to the rear of the building, but that's actually more to the front. So my thought was, you know, with the rear, it would have been behind the building, but in viewing this, it appears to be that there is no place to put it behind the building, so it would front Veterans Memorial Highway. But this particular property was rezoned or zoned as light commercial in 1997, and in 2018, the applicant submitted an other business item to allow for floor and counter business, and that request was granted. But in both zoning hearings, the Board of Commissioners prohibited outside storage, which was stipulated both in the 1997 and 2018 zoning applications. And I uphold those conditions and support staff's recommendation for denial, and I am prepared to make a motion. I make a motion to deny OB 61-2023, and also would like to make a clerk's note that code enforcement will begin a notification of violations for non-compliance with the landscape conditions of 1997 and all other conditions that have not been met in both the 1997 zoning application as well as the 2018 other business item application.
Thank you, Commissioner. Is there a second?
Second and discussion.
Please, go ahead.
Is there a date certain to come into compliance? Or just have them inspect?
I don't know. Well, I don't think that I can impose a date because it has to go through the code enforcement process.
Okay.
So code enforcement will go out, they'll have an opportunity to correct the issues, and, you know, it'll just have to go through that process.
Particularly if we're denying, if we're denying, yes.
Mm-hmm. Yeah.
Okay, we have a motion, and I see the applicant has her hand raised. We're in deliberation. I don't know if we've made a material assumption about something with respect to her application, but Commissioner, we do have a motion in a second. Really, at this time, it's up to the board to vote. What I can do, I'll have a brief recess after this, and you can talk with the commissioner if something material has changed that we did not consider prior to our vote. We'll have the opportunity to immediately address it. Okay? All right, so we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion? Call the question. Okay, the motion passes five zero. We'll take a brief break for about five minutes and have the applicant speak to the commissioner if there needs to be a reconsideration of that motion. Okay. We'll take a break. We'll take a break.
We are at our final other business matter for the afternoon. John, I'll turn things over to you for you to tee us up for this case.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Next item is other business item number 67 of 2023, which is to consider a settlement litigation for NPS Ventures regarding case other business item number 65 of 2022. The property is located at the northwest intersection of Johnson Ferry Road and Waterfront Drive in Land Lot 470 of the 16th District. And typically, Madam Chair, we do ask for opposition to these cases.
Okay.
So is there anyone here opposed to other business item number 67? We got three. Okay, let's make sure there's three people opposed. Is Brian going to be here?
Okay. How would you like for us to read in this matter or present this matter prior to hearing from opposition? This is a settlement of litigation.
This is a settlement.
As you need.
And typically, we, you know, if you want to, Madam Chair, I can read in the background information on the business item. That kind of explains.
Please, that would be helpful.
What's going on. The subject property was a rezoning application from 2000. That rezoned this property from ONI and R20 to NRC for Walgreens Drugstore only. The applicant submitted an other business application, which was OB 65 of 2022, to amend the stipulations to allow other NRC permitted uses on the property since the Walgreens Drugstore has left the property. The Board of Commissioners approved the application to allow some of the uses, or to allow some uses, with the stipulation that all of the uses be approved by the Board Commissioners. The applicant filed a lawsuit challenging the decision. Since the filing of the lawsuit, the applicant has communicated with the county regarding a potential compromise to the decision. The applicant has proposed to allow other NRC uses as well as other stipulations, and the applicant has submitted a detailed letter of the proposed settlement dated November 29th, 2023, which is attached to the other business item. And at this point, Madam Chair, if you'd like to hear from the opposition, I think we can start calling them up.
Thank you. Yes, please. Those who are here in opposition perceive they'll need to be sworn in, and then we can hear from them individually. Please feel free to approach.
Yeah, just leave, just leave that one up. Oh, that is, okay. Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Commissioners, my name is Richard Groh. I represent East Cobb Civic Association and Case Manager for OB 67. It's a settlement and compromise communication letter dated November 21, 2023. The applicant proposes a settlement of a litigation regarding NPS Ventures versus Cobb County at all. During the hearing for the OB 65 of 2022, ECCA stated in our opinion that not all NRC permitted uses are compatible with this challenging piece of property and recommended a proposed list of prohibited uses. These, those prohibited uses were based on three major concerns in allowing unrestricted NRC use of the property: traffic, noise, and compatibility with the adjacent residential area. In reviewing the applicant's proposed settlement letter, ECCA recommends the following changes. We've given this to you as a proposal and a handout. Stipulation one concerning Dollar Tree, ECCA does not have a recommendation. Stipulation two concerning a restaurant with drive-through service or childcare centers, these two uses produce high volumes of traffic at rush hour with potential backup of traffic onto Waterfront Drive and Johnson Ferry Road. Waterfront Drive, as you know, will be the only access to the future 77 homes in the Z22 gated community. For these two uses, ECCA recommends that the access to Waterfront Drive be closed. If you, if you want a fast food restaurant there, let's not back the traffic up onto Waterfront Drive so people can't get to their homes. Traffic will then only be allowed to access the property from Johnson Ferry Road. Concerning supermarkets exceeding 10,000 square feet, supermarkets require deliveries by large semi trucks, which have difficulty maneuvering to enter the property from Waterfront Drive. ECCA recommends that all delivery semis be required to only access the Johnson Ferry Road, only use the Johnson Ferry Road access. For all other uses in stipulation two, ECCA has no objections. Stipulation three, add group homes back into the prohibited use list. This was on the original list of prohibited uses in OB 65 of 2022. Stipulation four, delete the word substantial in line five. Stipulations five and six, delete both. Add a new stipulation to read any stipulations not in conflict with stipulation later dated 11/21/23 will remain in effect. ECCA recommends the approval of OB 67 of 2023 only if the above changes to the settlement letter are accepted by the applicant. Thank you.
My name is Rachel Bruce, and I am here on behalf of the Josh Committee, a community, a community group appointed by Commissioner Richardson. The Josh Committee is in opposition to proposed permitted uses for this former Walgreens location. We support the ECCA's comments, especially regarding the traffic concerns that they have. We'd also like to add insight to this, to the record, small box discount store study done by DeKalb County and enter it into the record. We do not agree that some of the proposed uses encourage the type of thoughtful development that our community needs in order to thrive into the future as the new neighborhood of 75 detached single-family homes abutting this property are built. We would like to reiterate the Josh Committee's previously approved and restricted uses, which better reflect the desires of the community for the highest and best use of this parcel, and respectfully request that this case be denied. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is David Rumril, and I'm a resident of East Cobb Chimney Lake Subdivision, which is only about two or three football fields away from this property. I was present during the OB 65, and I agree with the way that was handled. I think the stipulations are prohibited and allowed uses was appropriate. But I am opposed to the proposed settlement of OB 67 as stated in the letter dated November 29th, 2023 by the plaintiff. My opposition is based upon the increased traffic and queuing of traffic on the waterfront drive, the shortened waterfront drive, that certain proposed approved uses of this property will generate. Waterfront Drive will become a 500-foot public road ending in a gated RA5 community entrance and exit with up to 77 units. The main ingress egress point for the McDonald's is on the south side of this now will become a stub road, and the quote Walgreens property is on the north side of the shortened waterfront drive. Both of them only about 300 feet from the gate and only a couple of hundred feet from the intersection of Johnson Ferry and the stub waterfront drive. So traffic was, at the original Walgreens approval years ago, is now and will be an issue on this parcel because of where it's located, how it's done, what's grown up around it, and what, what's been approved around it that increases traffic. Therefore, I ask you to please remove restaurants with a drive-through. Restaurants with sit-down are okay, even restaurants with curbside pickup if there's adequate parking is okay. But the drive-through restaurant, remove. Remove childcare centers and remove supermarkets exceeding 10,000 square feet from the list of approved sites contained in the letter of proposal settlement. Each of these uses would exacerbate the queuing of traffic, especially at certain times of the day, morning and evening rush hours, and will be intolerable for the residents of the new RA5 community and for through traffic on Johnson Ferry Road. Traffic already queues back off of the McDonald's onto that stub portion of waterfront drive with the current parcel being unused. And now exacerbating that will be a RA5 development with a gate that'll slow traffic down going into it. So because of the size and geometry of the current parcel, I also ask that you prohibit the use of semi-trailers. They already have a difficult time navigating in that property. I think even the, the, the backside just does not limit itself to it. They run over part of the landscaping back there in the back every time they come through. So I'd like to see the semi-trailers not be, the delivery of semi-trailers not be, by semi-trailers not be allowed. Other folks have indicated other nonuses, prohibited uses suggested such as discount stores, thrift stores, mattress stores, or consignment or fulfillment stores. I am in support of that, but again, my main issue is don't approve anything that's going to increase the queuing of traffic on out to waterfront drive. Just as an example, I, on my way here this morning at 10 o'clock, I passed our newest Chick-fil-A on Raul Road and just east of the four lane, and there were, at 10 o'clock in the morning, there were 12 cars queued up back behind that new Chick-fil-A. So I can't see anything different happening here if you approve drive-through. Also, in the previous approvals and in the recommendations from Cobb County coming up for OB 67 here, the Cobb County stated that all their previous comments and stipulations from OB 65 be incorporated, and I want to make sure that is included because it was not addressed in the letter from the attorney. So I ask that you either deny, because you did the right thing last year on OB 65, or at least approve, give the applicant additional concessions, some of what he, what he's asked for, but do not allow anything that's going to cause traffic to queue back up on that. And I'd kind of like to hear what DOT has got to say about it. And also request that whatever you've put in there, that a traffic study be done that shows there is no queuing. Right now, we've got unspecified uses of the property. He just, the applicant just wants this long laundry list of things I could put in there with no specifics about how it's going to impact that very congested intersection now. Thank you very much.
Do we get staff's recommendation for a settlement of litigation, or do we just defer to the district commissioner?
For settlement of litigation, the staff does not make a, make a recommendation.
Okay. For our county attorney, would you like to weigh in before I turn things over to the district commissioner?
Mr. Johnson's been handling this case. Mr. Johnson, you can approach. He's handling the litigation as well as the mediation for us to be able to get to this point today.
Brian, Johnson County Attorney's Office, this is a settlement litigation to the zoning decision from February 2023 by the Board of Commissioners. It has been extensively discussed, including just recently, as to proposed uses, as to the use that a client is already in place for and ready to proceed to receive certificate occupancy. I recommend to accept the settlement of litigation with some modifications from the district commissioner, and happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Okay. Thank you, Bill. Sorry, Brian. It's a long day for me. Commissioner Richardson, I'll turn this over to you.
Thank you. And I likely will need a little bit of procedural help as I get through some of these things, but, and I, I do have a question as well for DOT related to traffic studies, if you Thank you. One of the stipulations in here does include that any, anything that requires a substantial change to the plan would have to go through a whole new site plan review process, et cetera. And was curious, though, on the traffic studies, what compels a traffic study to be sure done?
So during the zoning process, any use that creates, that produces 750 vehicle trips in a single day, or 75 trips in a single hour, or a peak hour, then that will require a traffic study to be done. They prepare us for submittal with all of their, their assumptions, and then we approve that, and then they submit us a submittal too if we think that is deemed, correct? And then, then if it's not during the sunny, during the zoning process, if it's during the plan review process, then the threshold goes higher because supposedly that presumably the parcel is already zoned properly, correct? So in that case, we, the threshold goes higher, is 3,000 vehicle trips will trigger the traffic study, 3,000 on a daily, on a daily basis.
And just off of this list, can you tell me what, in other scenarios, may trigger a traffic study? A restaurant with a drive-through?
Probably yes, yeah.
Childcare center?
It might, depending on how large it is.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Supermarket?
Potentially, yes. And again, it depends on the size and, yeah, mostly the size, probably the square footage of the building that is proposed.
Okay. Um, and then I know that there was a recommendation as well during the original hearing from Cobb DOT with regards to a deceleration lane.
Yes.
For those entrances, and I know that there was concern about, or there was a suggestion to close waterfront in the case that some of these uses are there. Can you just kind of share a little bit on the decel lane requirement?
Correct. So this is, Johnson Ferry is a major thoroughfare, and in major thoroughfares, we require a deceleration lane for any new developments. Obviously, they don't have the frontage to do that, and they're very close to the signal. So our recommendation was if they could not provide the deceleration lane, we were recommending to close the Johnson Ferry Road access, which means waterfront will be the only access, which contradicts now what ECCA is saying, is recommending. So we will have to review that in plan review or during this planning, during the zoning case, if you would like us to, but that is not resolved. Our recommendation was contradicting what they're recommending.
Okay. And that decel lane, is that for all uses or for?
For all uses, yes. I think for commercial uses.
Okay. And so my assumption is that that's still in effect for the current?
Yes.
Dollar Tree that's intended to go there?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. All right. Other questions from the board?
Go ahead. Commissioner Burrow?
Hi. Are, is there adequate parking for retail?
I'm not sure. I will defer to John on that one.
They have the required number of spaces for parking?
Yes. This was originally developed for Walgreens, and they met the parking requirements at that time.
Okay. Um, is, is there any way to restrict the access from waterfront?
Well, then the only access will be the right in, right out on Johnson Ferry, and we will have to reconsider our recommendation that the deceleration lane, we will have to waive that requirement on a major thoroughfare.
But there's not, there's not a signal there now. There used to be. There was at one time.
There is a signal at the, that's the Walmart, right? The Walmart is across the street.
At waterfront and, yeah. So that's going to be hard to. So that's gonna be hard to... Okay, well, I, I wouldn't support a drive-through, number one, or the other two uses, a daycare or the drive-through restaurant. Retail with no drive-through, but, that's putting a lot of traffic on Waterfront. But would a retail store be any more than what's there now by traffic study? Did the traffic study look at that?
So what is being contemplated as a part of the settlement is these uses, if, if it requires a change in the footprint, requires a different volume than what's currently here, it would have to go through another process, but that these uses would be permitted?
All three that are being proposed? All three, or just one?
For all, all of the restaurants, the childcare, the, everything that's listed here.
Okay, okay.
The cultural facilities.
I have a question, and I can't read my notes, Leahy. If you can just share again if there is a proposed decel lane on Waterfront?
No, there isn't one.
There's not? Is that, okay. Thanks. Can you help us in understanding what additional modifications would be considered at this point in addition to the settlement of agreement?
Sure, thank you. The, so there is a request to add to the prohibited uses several other items, which includes mattress stores, thrift stores, fulfillment centers, furniture rental stores, convenience stores, validating no outside storage. And then just a note to everyone that the bed and breakfast is already not permitted in this area. And then the, the other uses, it was, so the second amendment here included as well the trying to identify a way in which the uses here in A through F, knowing they could prompt a traffic study, that the traffic study would, that that would be a part of what happens with these uses in order to accommodate the known issues about this intersection.
And is this a given, considering some of the uses that have been contemplated, that it would have triggered additional transportation?
That was where I went through the list to hear, just on the record, what would prompt the traffic study, and then to understand which of these uses most likely would fall into that category. So that would include things like a restaurant with a drive-through, childcare center, supermarkets, yeah. Even though for this supermarket, by the way, that is another make sure is that this supermarket is referring to the current footprint. If the footprint were to change, it would trigger a whole new site plan in OB review process.
What I'm trying to get to is that with the settlement that has happened, is it not implied that it would require staff review of certain impacts that the ultimate use would have on the site? It would go through our plan review process, similar to other development?
It is, that is true. And like I said, it also encompasses that if it is a change to the footprint, it goes through an OB altogether.
Okay.
So it's not just, if it changes the footprint?
Okay.
It's an OB.
Which would have public review? Okay.
It's meant to be the catch-all for the different items. And then the only other, well, there were two other recommendations around, for edits, no overnight stays to tie to item C for rest homes and personal care homes, and to have hour restrictions for any, any kind of semi-trucks, because that was the limitation. There was a desire to see if semi-trucks could be prevented, but that is not within the boundary of what could be requested.
And just for clarification on your last point, is this a suggestion, or it's included in the matter of settlement, that any change to the site plan would come back for other business?
That is in the current stipulation.
Okay.
Yes, that is item four, that it does use the word substantial, which I was just gonna ask for clarity from someone in the county office to provide context for the, for the word substantial or material, but that basically it says, if there is any material or substantial alteration to the property, which requires the approval of any kind of new site plan, then it must be approved by the Board of Commissioners as an other business item. Just not to the use, but to the site plan.
Is staff able to clarify that before we have Commissioner Sheffield weigh in?
When something comes in that's gonna change the building, Madam Chair and Board, you know, the staff looks at the existing conditions, and for instance, this building is a Walgreens drugstore with a drive-through canopy. You know, substantial would be something where they, they want to add a certain number of square footage, and there is a definition in the zoning code that it's kind of the gatekeeper for what's minor, what's major, as far as bringing it back to the board. But generally, anytime there's more than a 25% increase in the building size, it would have to come back. If they have to apply for an LDP, it has to come back, or if they're tearing down a large portion of the building, that may have to come back also.
Okay.
And we normally do consult with the district commissioner before we make a decision on that.
Okay. Thank you. Commissioner Sheffield?
I just had a question regarding the hours for any residential use. Are there any attached if it's like a nursing care facility?
If it's a what?
Like a nursing care facility, there was a mention with some residential type uses. Are there hours attached to those type of uses?
That was, the idea was no overnight stays, but I don't have a specific hours yet.
Okay.
And just to clarify, for something like a drive-through lane, that would require an LDP, yes? That would require, that would be, that would be considered a substantial change to this parcel, to add drive-through lanes, even though there's a drive-through canopy?
And the parcel has a drive-through in it right now for the pharmacy that's still on the back of the building. So if it was a lot different than that, or added a double drive-through, then possibly it would have to come back to the board.
All right. Commissioner, any other questions for Commissioner Richardson?
Well, this might be legal too, I don't know. When this came in for zoning, there was a list of prohibited uses, but also was my understanding that, and this was before the lawsuit, so that may have changed, that whatever was going there would come back as other business for the specific use. But in this proposal, there's several different options that we're, will be voting on. So I, is that because it's a settlement of litigation that we have more than one use?
Correct. That was part of, part of the claims under the litigation.
Okay, well, so if, if, if they just get blanket use from what's proposed, then the district commissioner will, will approve the final site plan in use?
It depends on if there's a substantial change or not. It depends on whether there's a site plan change or not. It depends on what the particular list that she has.
Okay. Well, I just think with the development that's going here with the church and the townhomes and the old Z-71, whatever it was, this is a critical corner too, and it's very high, high traffic, and I have concerns with entering or exiting off of Waterfront into neighborhoods, because with the other plan, the townhomes don't have access down to Waterfront. So I, I don't know if I can support anything more intense than just retail without any drive-through and any enlarging of the footprint or use. That's just my two cents.
Yeah, what I'm, there's, because there's currently a built drive-through there, so like it kind of...
Yeah, but for a pharmacy, not a restaurant.
I understand, I understand, but...
Okay, well, just make your motion.
Other, well... Are there other thoughts or questions?
Commissioner Campbell?
I guess kind of what I'm hearing in the discussion is we're modifying this letter of settlement and compromise, correct? But we haven't heard from the author of this as to if they agree with the changes, and I'm not sure, sitting up here listening to the discussion, if I'm clear on what changes are going to be made to this letter.
Yeah, that was where I know I'm gonna need some procedural help to know if or how the attorney can, I'm deferring to Brian here to know what to do with that part.
At this point, I mean, when you make a motion, the motion will include approval with the changes you're making, and I think that will clear up some of the questions as to the changes to the letter, the settlement letter. But if you want to ask the plaintiff's attorney to come up to whether or not he agrees with all the, I mean, you're certainly welcome to do so since he is here, and typically that we would have been part of the presentation, but we were still upstairs.
Okay. One more question for DOT. What I'm trying to, like, this is kind of the piece where we're last left off. I think there is a, there is an interest, a spirit of interest to find a way to accommodate the potential future traffic concerns related to these uses, and find a way to articulate that within this, as a part of the process itself, within this settlement. And I am a little void of language to accommodate that desire, but I do know that that desire is present across the board.
Understood. I would recommend from our perspective is that depending on the use that they propose for the development, if it's a dollar store, it's different, it's gonna generate different trip generation than daycare center, slightly different, but it might trigger or not a traffic study. So to recommend for them to propose a use and then determine whether that use, submit a submittal one, which will tell us whether the use necessitates a, a traffic study submittal two. Does that make sense? Or if you don't want to stipulate that, we, we can, we just need to know what it is, because it is different, different uses determine, give different traffic generation. So therefore, I cannot tell you today that this daycare center, because it could be a small daycare center, it could be, you know, that doesn't trigger a traffic study, but it could be a grocery store that, that is small enough that doesn't trigger one, therefore, or, or a drive-through that it does trigger a traffic study. So I don't know if, I'm not sure that I'm rambling along and not answering your question, so.
No, you're fine. We, because we know what the use is going to be today and technically in a few years, right? There's, there's the Dollar Tree that is going there. What I'm trying to contemplate are the later uses that are available for this parcel, and what can be done within this agreement, language wise, for items A, B, C, D, E, and F, per se. I know there are some changes that I recommended, but for this section in the currently proposed, in the current proposal, that could speak to for these types of uses. I just, I don't know if there's, I don't know if there's language that I can use for that, and I haven't been able to find that yet.
Go ahead.
Okay, let me, let me see if I can help here.
Okay.
So I have a parcel very similar to this in my district. It was restricted to a pharmacy, okay, and a pharmacy only, similar situation, next to residential, commercial on the outer side, not four lane, but similar. So what we did, it was going to be a Dollar Tree, and I know I've heard you mention Dollar Tree, and also the opposition mentioned Dollar Tree, is that we approved it to have a sign change, right, which allowed the Dollar Tree to go there using the existing building, and then they modified the existing building. The rest of the, the conditions remained on the property, which means if it goes to another use, they're going to have to come back as an other business item to be approved, which I think is what this letter of settlement is still saying, right? Is if they go outside of the existing building, then it has to come back to the board.
Correct.
So if it is about getting the viable use of the property started, you know, and this would be a legal question, is, you know, can we approve the use, right, but then deny the letter of settlement to have further discussions as far as in the future?
This is settlement of litigation, and so we're, the settlement is what's being presented, and there's minor modifications, that I, my understanding that Commissioner Richardson has spoken with the applicant, that they're in agree to the minor modifications. We would not recommend that you disapprove just a portion of the settlement. I don't know if plaintiff would even do that or not. We'd just either go forward with the litigation, or we would, we would approve with the, with the minor modifications that she has to the agreed from the mediation settlement.
I have a question, and this may be illegal for legal, but you have your list, you have your list of uses as part of the litigation settlement. Can we stipulate in some way that although we have those, but if there is a future use that fits one of those proposed uses that the traffic study would perhaps have to come back before the board?
That, that was what I thought I could do, and that's where I said it seems to be outside of what I specifically can do, and so I'm searching for language that could be leveraged, and so I was attempting to see if there was something I could leverage out of the DOT definition, but I can't, because I can't use that exact language, apparently, so.
Bill?
I didn't know if that was what plaintiff's counsel has agreed to or not, not agreed to, I don't know. If he has, if he's agreed to it, you can add to that, that condition as part of the settlement.
Okay, well...
Can we hear?
We don't, we don't have anything on record here.
Excuse me, Bill, are we in a position where we cannot hear from, from litigation? Okay. And Commissioner, excuse me, calling you a Commissioner now, Leahy, if we have a commercial use that goes into a parcel, what would then trigger a transportation analysis?
Right, so we have the thresholds that I spoke about earlier. So, yes, so we have thresholds during the zoning, it's 750 daily trips in a single day, or 75 trips in a single hour.
Okay.
And if it goes beyond here and it goes to the, the land disturbance permit, then it's 3,000 vehicles.
I recall hearing that. What about outside of zoning?
The plan review process. So then it will be when they're going through plan review.
Commissioner, I believe that a transportation analysis is implied based on the ultimate use of the property. It's very difficult to understand, are we trying to make this a bar of some sort? Or are we saying that it's gonna be required? Because if it's the latter, I'm hearing... Because if it's, the latter, I'm hearing from staff that they are automatically going to do that should it be triggered by the anticipated number of trips generated. It's, it's very difficult for me to understand why this is holding up. That consideration is holding up as determining how we move forward.
I just have a question for clarification.
Is it regarding that? I just want to hear Commissioner Richardson's response first.
Just a question for clarification. Let's just assume this is going to be zoned as the Dollar Tree. And for the list of agreed uses, would they automatically have to come back if it's already been approved for that use? Or if Dollar Tree vacates, can they just move in without notifying the county?
Okay, let's get the first question answered first before we go to this because it's not necessarily related to transportation. Commissioner Richardson, I'm trying to understand from you, what additional consideration are you expecting for transportation analysis that will not be triggered by the number of trips that staff perceives will be generated?
So the concern is that there are queuing issues today as it exists today. And just listening to the definition, there may be several of these that wouldn't necessarily meet that threshold, but would certainly still present logistical traffic problems, maybe not volume traffic problems. And so I know that that was something that was important from a consideration perspective. And so.
So you're looking for additional analysis other than what staff was saying they would provide based off of the number of trips they perceive would be generated?
Okay.
So what I think also is a concern I know of mine is essentially this is now site plan specific. So if the trips exceed the 750 a day or the 75 per hour, which is in our code, there is nothing to trigger them going back in and putting in the 150-foot deceleration lane, restricting it to ride-in, ride-out. I think that is, might be where you're going and where the community is going is that this is essentially being approved site plan specific, even though it's not use-specific. And the intensity can change, yet it doesn't then drive the applicant to do the necessary improvements to help with the traffic flow. Yes?
It, it may not be an applicant at that point because if they are doing something that's a use that's permitted. What I'm trying to understand is, isn't there enough, is there enough of a trigger within our administrative process that would require a certain analysis of transportation? Or they would just limit it and say, you cannot have this use because according to what this site is zoned for, it only allows for these uses?
Well, that use, as DOT has explained, if it came up and was being, was being applied for, for them to be able to come in and do it, that yet it would trigger that requirement for a, for a traffic study.
And if the site, so if somebody wants to come in and move in the site and they exceed what staff said is part of the zoning application as far as transportation accommodations, and what they want to put in is more intense, would they be required to do it outside of the zoning process? John, maybe?
Can you restate that question?
I think it was the same.
If we approve something today and they change the use over time, but it's a permitted use, but it's perceived that the traffic generation is going to exceed what's being considered upon approval of zoning, would staff then tell them that they cannot have that use or require them to do something to better accommodate that use?
Most likely it would be something to, to better the site plan if the use is more intense. You know, this is going to go in for a Dollar Tree tomorrow, let's say. In five years, they would come in for a fast food restaurant. So at that time, they would have to come in for a site plan review to get an LDP. And at that time, DOT would require a traffic study to figure out what else they need to do because traffic's going to be different.
And then I'm also seeing from the stipulation letter that any different use has to come back for other business anyway.
Well, that's the current conditions.
That you're looking to possibly change? Okay. Well, but outside of that, there's still the plan review process.
That's correct.
Just to revisit, that actually was my question, which I guess is a DOT question. So it does sound like the trigger would be for them to come back for, for approval for another, an updated study.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Should be a catch-all. Thank you. All right. Do, I guess, would you like to join us here? Plaintiff's attorney.
Afternoon, everybody. My name is Nick Aramelli. I am the plaintiff's attorney in this settlement of litigation. And I wrote the letter that is causing all these discussions. It's not my fault. But, yeah, I know. We appreciate you having us here today. From our perspective, there should not be a public debate about a settlement of litigation. There was an executive session held where this exact document was discussed. That was our understanding. And terms of this letter were not going to be changed. That's what we were led to believe. That's why we did not appear from the beginning. We rushed over here when we heard that things were going to get changed at the last minute. But ultimately, we are interested in improving the community. My client is. I represent the landowner. And so certain recommendations, we have heard from Commissioner Richardson. And we're open to certain ones. However, at the end of the day, it's our position that right now the settlement and stipulation letter is the agreement between the parties, is the settlement of the litigation. If there are things that are going to be proposed, we would like to have an opportunity to just hear those for the record so that we can say yes or no, one way or another, to each one of those. On the, on the traffic piece, which I know is a big, big deal, we feel like the settlement letter properly captures when a traffic study would be required. If, if there is a requirement to come back for site plan review, Mr. Peterson just spoke to it, an LDP would trigger a DOT study. And at that point, we have to get their approval, whether it's, you know, for a DC lane for this, for that, for the safety of the, of the traffic that's going there. But as far as the letter goes, it says what's approved and it says what is required if we try and go beyond that. We feel like it's very clear and we negotiated it in good faith with the county. So I'm, I'm here because I want to figure out a way to make it work. And so we're here to listen to what those recommendations are. But as it sits right now, our position is this is the settlement. This letter is the settlement, the one I drafted. So I appreciate that. And I'm, I'm here to listen. I mean, if there is a proposed change to it and we can just enumerate those because I think we've gone back and forth, we could do that.
Thank you very much. And yes, wanted to enumerate those for you for adding to the list of prohibited uses. Mattress stores. Let you get your pen. Mattress stores, thrift stores, fulfillment centers, furniture rental stores, convenience stores, and no outside storage.
We have no objection to adding those prohibited uses.
Thank you. And then for the rest homes and personal care homes, no overnight stays.
Okay.
And for the removal of E, the in-home daycare. And then just for the record, with the supermarkets exceeding 10,000 square feet, this is specific to the current footprint, that if there were to be a change, that would come through in other business if it were larger than the current footprint. It seems like we've covered at length that there really isn't a lot of language we could use for the traffic piece.
Do we know what the square footage of the existing building is?
It was approved to be 13,900 square feet 20 years ago.
And so the question is still open. Are you amenable to those proposed changes?
Yeah, we have no objection to those. I believe we would ask that banks also be out, added as allowed.
What?
That banks also be added.
Banks, yes.
As allowed use, not a prohibited use.
And I think one other thing we were discussing were the hours of operation for semi trucks.
The, the current tenant that's proposed there is a national tenant. There, there's no way for the property owner to restrict when trucks, deliveries, that kind of thing. I mean, honestly, it's, it would seem like the trucks arriving. I mean, just personally, trucks arriving later is better for traffic if that's the issue. But that's, that's one that I don't even think we can agree to. I don't think my client can even, even entertain that right now.
Thank you. That, I guess, that will, I motion to make those changes as read into the record to our letter, letter of agreement.
Just for clarity, if you're, you're speaking of the, Mr. Aramelli's letter of November 29th?
Thank you, yes.
Twenty, 23.
Twenty, 23. Is there a second?
House Second, is there any further discussion on this?
Sure. Added to the list of prohibited uses, mattress stores, thrift stores, fulfillment centers, furniture rental stores, convenience stores, no outside storage. And then for part C, to C, no overnight stays, to remove to E.
To E, correct?
Yes, to E. And then for the record, just stated, to E.
And I think also the plaintiff asked for banks to be allowed as a permitted use as well.
Banks on permitted, on allowed uses.
To E, in-home daycares, that's what's being.
Correct. Correct. And then for the record, just stated, the supermarkets exceeding the 10,000, it's still limited to the square footage of the current building.
And we would add the banks as an allowed use, please.
He's asking if that banks be allowed as a.
Yes, yes. And banks be allowed. And you got the no overnight stays. Okay. Twenty nine, November 29th, 2023. Thank you.
Okay, is there any further discussion?
Okay, just one question for clarification. The overnight stays, that doesn't pertain to someone using the personal care home, does it? It's a daycare, he said personal care home, but a personal care home would just be for day use, is what you're suggesting, okay? All right, so there's a motion and a second. Any further clarification or comments? Questions? Call the question. The motion carries three, two with Commissioners Burl and Gamble in opposition. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Yes, before we adjourn, there's a recognition I'd like to make that someone who's been here with us for some time will be doing some other things at her own leisure and, and choice after today. And that's Margie Vasquez. She's been representing community development at our hearings. And we understand you're retiring. Yes. After how many years? 25 years. Yes. Thank you for your service, yes. Hope you get to spend some time somewhere where it's sunny and warm and. Yes, feet can be up. And we understand that you have your replacement who's been here today. You don't mind introducing yourself, sir? Sure, why not?
Hello, everybody. My name is Cameron Jones. I'm a planner too with Cobb Zoning Office. And I will be replacing Margie because everyone knows she is retiring and she's done a great job and all of that. Just a quick background on me. I was born in St. Louis. Got an undergrad degree at Georgia State and a master's degree in planning at Georgia Tech as well.
Gold jackets. We like that. Yes.
So I'll be, Margie will be passing the torch and I'll be taking over her.
You're wonderful. Thank you for being here today. And Margie, thank you for being here today and thank you for showing up for us day in and day out with our zoning hearings. We wish you all the best. With that, happy holidays to everyone. Our meeting is now adjourned.